It is Monday, April 17th, 2023 at approximately 6:00 PM. This is a little bit unusual meeting. At the end of the month, when we have the normal planning and zoning public hearing, all five of the commissioners will be out of town. So we've taken the information that is needed for that and moved it forward. So those of you that are used to watching our agenda, you will see that there is a lot more planning and zoning decisions being made today. Secondly, thank you all for coming out and watching how your government is doing business. We appreciate it. We appreciate those people that come and make comments so that we understand your position and how you see the world to us. I also would like to request this time that you silence any electronic devices so as not to interrupt the proceedings. For those of you that are out here for the very first time and are not familiar with the way the board works, from me around to Commissioner Johnson, our commissioners, the five commissioners for the county, the next is our planner and our county zoning attorney, from me to the right side is the county manager, our county attorney, and our county clerk. What you see on the big screen is exactly what will be shown to the Board of Commissioners as part of a transparency issue, so that there's nothing that we're seeing that you're not seeing or anything like that. We do have the capability now to be able to take care of people who are seeing this as streamed, to be able to show people talking, and to show the screen at the same time, so it's not just a constant picture with that. With that, I'd like to ask Pastor Robbie Milner from the United Christian Fellowship of Griffin to deliver the invocation, and Commissioner Rita Johnson from District Three to lead us in the pledge to the flag. Pastor.
Good evening to everybody. Let us pray. Oh heavenly Father, we come to you now, just first of all, just thanking you, Lord God, for your grace and your mercy, Lord God, for watching over us this day, Lord God, this day that you've made. And now, Lord God, I ask, as we seek you and petition you, Lord God, to guide our leaders, we thank you for, Lord God, that they're in the position that they're in, Lord God, and we ask you now to continue to give them insight, give them vision and direction as they make decisions for this community, Lord God. Give them the strength and the courage, Lord God, to make the tough decisions, Lord God, and help them to understand, Lord God, in this day, Lord God, that their services for the people, Lord God, and they will keep the people in front of them at all times, Lord God. We thank you for this opportunity that you've allowed us to come together, and we pray for this meeting to be done in decent and in order, for us in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let's please place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Item number four, presentation and proclamations. Consider a proclamation considering the correctional officers and staff at the Spalding County CI during Correctional Officer and Employees Week, May 7th through 13th, 2023. This group of people will make Georgia's prison system a recognized leader nationwide. Dr. Ledbetter?
Thank you. I'd like to read the proclamation for you at this time. In recognition of Correctional Officers and Employees Week, May 7th through 13th, 2023, whereas in 1984, President Ronald Reagan announced the first week of May as National Correctional Officer and Employee Appreciation Week, and that the president recognized the jailers and correctional officers have one of the highest rates of occupational injuries and sickness, and correctional officers and employees at the Spalding County Correctional Institute demonstrate dedicated service in performing their duties, and correctional officers and employees provide security, supervision, treatment, services, and reentry efforts for hundreds of individuals in the course of a year. And the work of Spalding County's correctional officers is an integral part of the daily operations of the Georgia Department of Corrections and the criminal justice system at large. And the correctional officers and staff at the Spalding County Correctional Institute help to make Georgia's prison system a recognized leader among penal institutions nationally. And whereas the residents of Spalding County recognize and understand the complex, dangerous, and challenging responsibilities carried out by every single member of the Spalding County Correctional Institute. Now therefore be it resolved, the Spalding County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize the men and women of the Spalding County Correctional Institute and encourage all residents to join in recognition and appreciation of the outstanding service provided by our professional correctional employees for the safety and welfare of our community. The Spalding County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of May 7th through 13th, 2023 as Correctional Officers and Employees Week in Spalding County, under the hand of Chairman Clay Davis and County Clerk Kathy Gibson. I believe the warden's here with us this evening.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve.
All right. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Speech.
Care to say anything, Warden?
First of all, I'd say I thank you for your gratitude and recognizing all the men and women who work in corrections, not only the ones in Spalding County. They're responsible for about 47,000 individuals that are incarcerated in the state of Georgia. And rest assured that we all can sleep a little bit better at night because of the job that they do. They're very professional. Their integrity is questioned daily, and they understand the importance of fighting through and maintaining a professional and have the highest levels of integrity because of the job they do and the responsibility they have. Thank you.
Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names, addresses, and the topics they wish to discuss. Speakers must direct your comments to the board and not to individual members or to the audience. Personal disagreements with individual members or county employees are not a matter of public concern, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The chairman has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing of the county's business in an efficient and respectful manner. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertinent to the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any members during citizen comments. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speakers will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend this rule. We have a beeper, a timer, so if those of you that this is the first time that you're here, when the timer goes through, timer goes off, your time is up, I'll gavel, and please leave. All right. Dr. Ledbetter?
First up this evening is Ms. Dino Robertson Ray. If you would, please state your name and address.
Hi, good evening, commissioners. My name is Dina Ray, and I reside at 73 Palm Road here in Griffin, and it is adjacent to the Tamachichi Road Project. I am here tonight opposing the rezoning application for the Tamachichi Project. I was in attendance at the January 26th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting where the public hearing occurred, and I had reviewed the minutes. Nowhere in the minutes or at the meeting was an emergency access on Chi Hall Road discussed. It should not be allowed now. I have sent numerous Open Records Act requests trying to get documents. I have not been given proper responses by the county. Last week, I was sent the traffic study that I requested months ago and that the county received in December 2022 and never provided to me. That is a clear violation of the law. We want a transparent government, and we do not feel like we have one here. A second entrance in the middle of homes with children playing in the yard is not what is in the best interest of the residents in this area. The applicant should have to abide by the county and state rules and ordinances, and the conditions should be focused on protecting the county and the neighbors, not just the applicant. And I wanted to say one other thing. With all the rezoning applications for warehouses that you've approved and what is on the agenda tonight, I just hope that you've taken into consideration all the traffic flow that is on each one of the traffic studies that these developers should be presented to you. So we would just like for you to take that into consideration, because it's not fair for the residents that are taxpayers in Spalding County to have to go through this kind of traffic to go to and from school and work on a daily basis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Appreciate it.
I believe it says Jerry McNeely.
Jerry McNeely, 131 Chi Hall Road. I'm also opposed to the rezoning application of the Tamachichi Project as presented. I was in attendance on January 26th of the Board of Commissioners meeting, and the citizens mentioned the safety concerns of traffic on Chi Hall Road. The commissioners listened and requested no access on Chi Hall Road. The applicant and his attorney stated in the meeting that they would agree to no access on Chi Hall Road. Now the application amended conditions on the staff reports references an access on Chi Hall Road. I can assure, I can assure, we just looking for transparency. Many of the people here that's had this uprising, it ain't about doing or not doing, it's about, let's be clear about what we are doing, right? And I don't think that that's kind of been followed in this procedure. My home located on 131 Chi Hall Road is not similar to the Promote Me and Square Foot Warehouse. It has concern for school buses going up and down the road with the safety of added traffic. It's a short road. Where the road meets High Falls Road, it could, for an 18-wheeler, it'd be truly unsafe, because I've just, as a car pulling out there, man, cars coming down High Falls Road, I've been hit almost twice. The commissioners pointed out on January 26th meeting that allowing access to this, on Chi Hall Road, was going against the county ordinance for no through truck roads. So I'm asking you to deny the access point on Chi Hall Road for anything, no curb cuts or anything, for the concerned citizens in our neighborhood. So, like I said, I don't want to say I don't want to approve it. I'd like to see growth, I just don't want to see it approved as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it.
Michelle Drew-Goss, 312 Whispering Pines Way, Griffin, Georgia. Good evening, commissioners, county manager and community staff. What Minerva Spring Lake LP is proposing with a special exception application number 23035 and two separate variance requests, 23-04 Victor and 23-05 Victor for cluster dwellings and reduced front and side yard setbacks along with reduced cul-de-sac diameter, does not match up with neighboring properties or developments. The purpose of the current R2 zoning as stated in the Spalding County ordinances is to preserve quiet, relatively low to medium density neighborhoods of single-family residences. Minerva's application for the special exception was originally for 343 detached single-family homes. Due to conditions recommended by the community development staff, it is now planned for 295 homes, but still will be built right on top of one another. These are family homes. There could be three to four vehicles per household. Where would they all be parked when they are so close to the street and the houses are so close together? How will emergency vehicles get in and out of the community with cars parked on the streets? This does not match the rural feel of Spalding County. R2 zoning states that lot size exceed 20,000 square feet. Minerva Spring Lake LP is applying for the special exception to change the lot size to 6,000 square feet, a 52-foot lot width, with only eight to 10 feet between homes, garage reduced to 20 feet from the sidewalk, and cul-de-sacs reduced to 96 feet. How does this provide room to raise a family? If you remove the two acres Minerva is donating to the county for a proposed fire station, the 14 acres for ride away, and the over 24 acres required for open space, it shows that the property is left with 58.6 acres for the 295 proposed homes. Even though the land is being donated for a fire station, what is the estimated cost for the county and the District 5 taxpayers to build it? People want to reside in Spalding County because of the rural feel. They do not want their homes to be right on top of one another with no privacy. People want, the application does not provide information on the elevation, the materials of the homes will be built up, the price range of these homes, nor the square footage of the homes. They compare this development to the villas in Heron Bay, but the villas is one street of 60 homes that are ranch-style homes for seniors age 55-plus, not 295 two-story family homes built right on top of each other. Heron Bay home values range from $300,000 to over $800,000. In an email I received from Brian Davison on March 20th, 2023, Mr. Davison confirmed that with the community development staff recommendation of the homes to be built with a 2,000-square-foot minimum, the home prices would range from $380,000 to $410,000, with some potentially being at $500,000. I have no problem with the home values for Timon Point, as long as it is in writing. I am against the plan for cluster dwellings. They have not compared this proposed development to Big Pines Farm.
Thank you.
I'm going to say the first name, so please help me with the last one.
Yes, it's Maurice Passananti. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to yield my time to Michelle, if I may.
No, I'm sorry. You can read the rest of her statement if you wanted to, from there, but you can't, she can't speak again.
But he needs his glasses.
Really?
Yeah, he can use his time anyway he wants. He gets three minutes. So he can read his statement, but he can't give it to her to read.
She can't speak again.
Oh, no, I did not know.
Your rules do not allow for them to speak more than once. It's in what's read.
Yeah, not more than once, unless the board.
That's right, unless the board allows it.
Okay, go ahead, Maurice.
Okay, they have not compared this proposed development to Big Pines Farm on Smoke Road, which will have 12,000 to 15,000 square foot lots, right next door to this development, and will have 247 homes built on 285 acres. With this proposed high-density development, Big Pines Farm, Timon Village, the two other existing developments, and Sun City Peachtree, which already has over 17,000 homes and will have over 3,400 homes when built out, there will be over 8,000 cars added to the traffic on Timon Road. Why hasn't a traffic feasibility study been completed first? There are already too many accidents on Timon Road and Jordan Hill with the current traffic. Even with a proposed 10% rental cap for Timon Point, that is still too high with Spalding County already at 70% rental properties. The county needs single-family homes for purchases so that the residents can achieve the American dream of owning their own home and raise their families. Rental caps need to be placed at 5%. Commissioners, I recommend that you follow the current R2 zoning Commissioners, I recommend that you follow the current R2 zoning to preserve quiet, relatively low-to-medium-density neighborhoods of single-family homes and ensure that all new developments are following your goal to raise the bar. This is just the beginning of new developments in the 5th District. Please be mindful that when you approve special exceptions, you are setting a precedent for future developments. I oppose this and I hope that the Board of Commissioners will not pass the special exception application and variances. I hope that you do not take a vote on this proposal until a traffic feasibility study is performed and the application is complete with all of the changes in writing, such as the property values, minimum square footage of the homes, and the 10% rental cap recommended by the community development staff. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Maurice.
Reese Futral?
My handwriting's shaky.
We understand. We're all there.
Okay. I live on the other side of 4953.
Did you state your address? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. 4953 Jackson Road.
Okay. Thank you.
I own property, my husband and I own property on Tomachichi, on the Jackson Road side. We own 250 acres on both sides of Jackson Road, I mean of Tomachichi, and we're farmers and we enjoy agriculture. But we, Jackson Road is a disaster anyway. From, Butts County has Dollar General, and the traffic we get, and then this traffic has gone, also come off of Jackson Road into Tomachichi. That's one thing I'm worried about. And then our school buses, our children that live there, but there are people that live in, on Tomachichi, all the way down, and they were customers of ours, and they're good, hard-working people. They have their animals, they have their churches, and they just live quiet lives, and they don't want that disrupted. But I don't want my farm, our farming, we grow hay and peaches. Well, we don't have peaches anymore, but we have hogs and we have chickens, and we grow cows. We don't grow cows. We grow, we grow a lot of hay, and so we have a lot of equipment going back and forth on Jackson Road onto Tomachichi. And I'm concerned about that. I'm not against growth. Growth is a fine thing, but I was wondering, and I have, this is the first meeting I've been to, if this, that million-dollar warehouse could not be, have ingress and ingress from Arthur Bolton and not be on Tomachichi, that might be good. But I don't know how the general public that's going to work there is going to get in there. They're not going to go from Henry County to probably 155 and have to go through there to get to that warehouse. I don't know what the answer to that is, but I just think this is, we have a wonderful complex on Arthur Bolton. I don't understand why they don't go there in this problem when the, I know that it's probably cheaper land and they can buy it, but I hate for us to disrupt these people. I'm old. I won't live a whole lot longer, so it's not going to affect me as much, but our farm will go on and we're raising cattle and I better shut up.
Thank you, Ms. Futral.
Peter Phelps?
Good evening, Commissioners, and good evening, County Staff. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to speak. This evening I am speaking in support of the special exception sought in application 23-03.
Excuse me, Peter. I'm sorry, did you state your address?
I didn't. I'm sorry. Peter Phelps, 804 Dusky Sap Court. So I'm speaking in support of application 2303S, the Minerva-Timon Point Project. I will address some of the negative statements and speculation. The topics for discussion are, first, cluster homes. I guess labels can unintentionally lend themselves to some folks conjuring up wrong conclusions. It is my understanding that cluster homes are simply residential properties grouped closer together so that the rest of the land can be open space for purposes such as green space, recreation amenities, and so on. The so-called cluster home, single-family detached units are not much different from models in neighborhoods in Sun City, if you look at the elevation, square footage, and lots. Next subject, next topic, density. A few people are indicating that Timon Point density is too high. I would counter that the Sun City density has less than an acre per lot compared to what is being offered in Timon Point, more than that. People in Sun City seem pretty content with their property. As a matter of fact, Sun City folks have invested in 1,700-plus homes so far. Variances in special exceptions were already vetted. Community Development, Planning Commission, Zoning Board, Attorney Galloway, and now it's before you folks. I believe various conditions have already been stipulated for the developer. Timon Point is too close to Sun City. Sorry, I cannot agree. That closeness will mean some kind of, the inference is that the closeness will mean some kind of infringement or potential crime. That, there is also an unfounded inference that the quality of homes in the Timon Point development will be inferior and therefore will somehow lessen Sun City values. I cannot agree. Timon Point rentals. There was a claim that Timon Point will have 100% rentals. I'm not sure where that came from, and I don't believe it to be true. I do believe the community development office and the zoning board imposed a 10% cap on any such rental possibilities. Cars and traffic. I would also agree that going forward, the BOC should consider traffic feasibility studies. I will offer this observation. The stated average of two cars per home does not translate to overwhelming traffic. Again, look at Sun City with its 1,700 homes.
Thank you, Ms.
Which might mean 2,400. I have, I have other items on here. I think it was distributed to the Board of Commissioners. I'd appreciate you looking at this, and I urge you to vote in favor of this special exception. Thank you.
Mike Hubbard?
My name is Mike Hubbard. I live at 338 Yancey Road in Milner, Georgia. I own a residence, my wife and I own a residence at 2667 Timon Road. This residence is directly across the street where the entrance and exit will be. There's, from what I understand, there's going to be one way in and one way out, which I think is nuts. There, the other problems I have, which has already been mentioned very thoroughly, is the traffic. The infrastructure does not support the existing traffic that is traveling on Timon Road right now, and from best of my knowledge, there's been no traffic studies done, no discussions about how that traffic will offset. There are about six residences that will see ongoing traffic 24/7 coming in and out of Timon Point. These are residents with two and three-acre tracts of homes. We have two acres where our residence is, and it's already hard to just get out of the driveway, living on Timon Road. And to add that much traffic with no feasibility studies done, I just don't, I don't understand The other thing that I would, that I've been concerned about, and I haven't been to a lot of these meetings, is the amount of cancellations of the meetings to be held. And during these cancellations and during the interim of time between when the meetings are held, there's been changes made to the application. So I don't think everybody knows in detail what else is being proposed for Timon Point. And I would ask that the decision on that be tabled, just like you've tabled for whatever reasons you have on these other meetings. Also, the zoning board, there was only three people present. I don't understand why there's, the chairman voted against it. A decision this important, why, what do the other zoning boards think? Why were they weren't present? But I do appreciate your time, and I would recommend that the decision be tabled for more transparency.
Thank you, Ms. Hubbard.
Lawrence Weeks?
Yes, my name is Lawrence Weeks. I live at 2966 Timon Road. Everything that Ms. Michelle said I agree with, but there's other things that has been neglected. This property has 99.214 acres. They want to put in a fire station, two open spaces, and there's over two miles of road in it. When you take all that out, you end up with 42.74 acres. You still have to subtract from that your stormwater areas, your railroad easement, and cemetery. It could end up being as little as 25, 30 acres. Good luck with building that many homes on 25 or 30 acres. Somebody, some Commissioner should send this back to the zoning board. They should have been more diligent when they checked this out. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Hubbard.
Ms. Brenda Weeks?
She's out. You don't come.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Jeff Grant?
I'm Jeff Grant, 237 Crouch Road, Griffin. I'm speaking, opposing the development at South McDonough Road, and I'm also representing many family members that are not here, couldn't be here for different reasons. Some are here. Also representing or speaking for people on Cathy Lane and Hope Drive. We're all opposed to this property being developed the way it is. We understand the one building was voted on, passed earlier. We really have no problem with that, but it's the building that runs parallel to Wild Plum Road that is a problem for us. This problem looks, this building looks to be servicing trucks, or not servicing trucks, but to be a logistics center or truck terminal because of a massive amount of truck parking. We feel that the traffic being dumped on South McDonough Road is going to be a big problem when, I know it's cheaper for the developer to do that, but what's it going to cost taxpayers to do all the improvements to McDonough Road, South McDonough Road, and continued maintenance of South McDonough Road? There is frontage over in the industrial park that could cut a road through to access both properties, and I don't even know if that's been looked at, but it needs to be considered because it is going to be a problem. Got to McDonough, to go a mile up at McDonough the other day, I sat behind 20 18-wheelers waiting to get on 75 for about 40 minutes. It's ridiculous, and I'll say Griffin would come in that way if these type developments keep happening. We feel it's going negatively, negatively affect our property values, our livelihood, and potential health insurance issues according to EPA and EPD. The property across from South McDonough Road is destined to be developed as well as some approvals already been done there. That's going to be more entrances coming on South McDonough Road. That's going to be a problem. This poor air quality comes with these developments as there's many, many studies done by EPA, EPD, and other sources about many health conditions related to diesel exhaust fumes. They're designated as carcinogenic to humans by International Agency of Research on Cancer, and it causes many other health issues, respiratory issues, because these diesel exhaust fumes remain at lower levels in the air that we breathe. And we just see that all these trucks coming in 24/7 through these warehouses is going to be a problem for area residences.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Appreciate it.
Kay Wimpy?
Hi, I'm Kay Wimpy. I live at 164 South Walkers Mill Road. I am here in opposition of both the Tomachichi and the South McDonough Road. In the last two years, y'all have done 16 buildings, approved 16 buildings in that area in less than a mile radius. We've told you our pleas and given you statistics on traffic pollution. We've also told you about drug trafficking and human trafficking that has gone on deaf ears. For the Tomachichi Road, we should have a moratorium. This should be denied. This commercial property out here was Commissioners or this board's idea, but you haven't gone and looked and put in good code qualities to go along with the people who live in that area. At the last meeting, we talked about the building on Tomachichi should have a 100-foot barrier. The response I got, well, we've never done that. That's not required. You're 53 or 35 South McDonough Road and the other property on the other side, you may then have a 100-foot barrier. So why would you not make this property as well have a 100-foot barrier? There should be no traffic on Tomachichi. If you let an access on Chi Hall or Tomachichi, they will come into the side road and trucks will park all up Tomachichi and Chi Hall Road. You can't stop it if you go ahead and approve this building. As far as the McDonough Road, you've got the problem with traffic there because they have proposed five driveways in less than a quarter of a mile from the red light to Wild Plum Road, all for traffic for commercial property. DOT limited access because they didn't want Arthur K. to be 2081. You, as Commissioners, are now making this 2081, but you are using our rural country roads that you are going to expect the citizens of this county to maintain. These buildings are not going to maintain them. Please stop this, and then let's look at a moratorium. There is going to be growth. We understand that, but there should be proper growth, and it should complement the people who live in that community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wimpy.
Richard Crowley?
Good afternoon. I'm Richard Crowley, 64 North Walkers Mill Road. I guess I'm going to be the first tonight, but I'm going to be against all three of your old items here tonight. I'd like to bring a couple of things to y'all's attention. I know y'all want this development. Y'all want it. Sounds like we all could use a little, but I think basically the county's not prepared for all this growth. Number one, road improvements. What have you done? Not much. I'm going to say for South Walkers Mill Road, according to what little time I had to read that report, you have a level of service of elf at the intersection of Walkers Mill and Bolton. Are you going to put another traffic light there? What are you going to do? Also, in that same area, McDonough Road, Walkers Mill Road, Tomachichi Road, all of that, you have a number of load-limited bridges. Well, those trucks are going to find those load-limited bridges. You've got at least two on Walkers Mill Road, one on Tomachichi Road. If they loop around from South Walkers Mill to, to South McDonough Road, you've got a bridge on Rehoboth. You've also got a bridge on Jenkinsburg Road that's not been replaced in a year. got a bridge on Jenkinsburg Road that's not been replaced in a year now. Y'all need to be prepared for this, not do it after the fact. What are y'all doing about water for this, this on Teeman Road? It says you have water, but you have a twelve-inch water main that was put in in the eighties. I recently saw, it looks like a water line got put in on the other side of Teeman Road from Henry County. Do you have enough water to supply all these houses? Y'all need to find out. Teeman Road, where this development's going in, you have a very sharp curve there. Have y'all looked at the site distance to know that people will not be hit entering and exiting that development? I also ask that you not approve any of the variance that's been asked for on this. Number one, you've got cul-de-sac design. That design is there for fire vehicles to be able to circle. Are y'all being, are y'all doing that if you're going to shrink those cul-de-sacs down? Another thing is, we don't need street parking there. You can't, if you have street parking, you're definitely not going to turn a fire vehicle around.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Crowley.
Brian Farrell.
Brian Farrell, five-oh-five Musgrove Road, Griffin, Georgia. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I won't be long. I'm here to talk about operations and maintenance of our county. We have an issue, guys. I have a road, Musgrove Road where I live at, just two weeks ago, we had patch crew come through. I requested this two months ago. Patch crew came through. They missed the two worst patches ten feet from where they put in junk patches. And today, when I did my morning walk, because I'm fat and I have to lose weight, doctor said, you got to walk or die. I said, I'll walk. So I'm doing my morning walk, and I'm walking along on my road, and I step in a pothole, twist my ankle, fall down. I'm an old fat guy. I can't fall down. I get hurt. That's because this county don't maintain their roads. Now, I counted the potholes when I got to the other end of my street. Nine tenths of a mile, there's a hundred and five potholes still left unfilled, four inches or larger, contact pack, contract, contact patch on an average tire is five inches. How long before all of these become another major issue? They didn't even finish what they started. I was promised they would, but it didn't happen. Now, that being said that we're not maintaining our roads, how in the world, guys, are we going to come up with the money to maintain the roads, these eighteen-wheelers on these projects? And all these extra twenty thousand cars on our roads are going to tear our roads up? How are we going to continue? We can't even maintain what we've got. And I understand we have to plan in advance. How long has Musgrove Road been here, guys? A hundred years? I've lived on fifteen. I've never seen a paving truck come down my road. Fifteen years. Average asphalt road's about seven years, unless it's high density. And then you get about three years out of it. How, just, I want you guys, just think about that. How do we maintain the property we already have when we can't, and now we're going to add severe truck traffic, severe automotive traffic with this many people moving in our county? I am for development. I am for this county getting better. We need the tax base. But what I learned a long time ago is, you can put two hundred houses in, you don't even cover the cost of your taxes, don't cover educating the kids that live in two hundred houses. It costs more to educate them than what you're going to get back in tax money. So we've got to be very specific in how we develop our, our land, and, and we have to be very specific how we spend our money specifically with operations and maintenance. I feel like I'm, I'm paying taxes for nothing. I live on a junky road that shouldn't be junky, and the patch crew comes through, and it literally, I, I'd challenge every one of y'all to ride down one end of Musgrove and back up the other. Don't swerve. Just drive where you're supposed to. Because if you get to swerving, my buddy's fellows back there will pull you over, say, you drunk? And say, no, I'm just dodging potholes. For real, guys, contemplate that. I don't, I'm for the development, but I'm more for let's maintain what we got already so we can move forward. Because my road is hazardous. And I, again, I challenge everybody right down my road. Have a blessed evening, everybody. Thank you.
David Lynch.
David Lynch, one-eight-five North Walkers Mill Road, for the application number twenty-two dash zero-nine-Z, the Teeman Road development. I'm opposed to it as presented. I believe possibly a smoke and mirrors trick by the developer for the setbacks required for property lines. With all these meetings in, what, five months, been back and forth, back and forth, this, that, and the other, I think we're getting the short end of the stick here, friends. A lot of disrespect to the bordering properties around. The saying, you get, the old saying, get the most for your money when you're out to do something, you're in the business to make, make a living. The developers good at doing this for themselves at the expense of Spalding County, I believe. The county's going to come up with the short end of the stick. They can cram an elephant into a test tube, but one day, soon, that test tube will bust, and the county is going to get caught holding the bag, holding the mess, managing what's left behind from all this, on that sixteen corridor, primary, all the other developments coming in there. Other jurisdictions I've found out in North Georgia, get concessions as these large development things come about in their counties. I wonder if y'all, is there any, any type of what, you know, to deal about, oh, we're going to give you a couple acres to build a fire station? Well, how much does a fire station and a couple of trucks, all the manpower to man that one station, that cost is back on the county. Why can't they just give you the whole station with a couple trucks sitting there? That'd be a nice concession. And the same for where I live. If all five fire trucks from the city all the way to the county line have to respond to an emergency at a large warehouse, my house is going to burn to the ground. Thank you. That's just, we're getting a cart ahead of the horse here on that sixteen corridor, I know for sure. So I please ask that you vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Gerald Bailey.
Shaking like a leaf on the foot of this tree. My name's Gerald Bailey. I live on High Falls Road. I moved there in nineteen sixty-eight when I was discharged from the, the Army. I'm serving at Kassam for a couple of years. Last time I was here, my lips were crippled, and one of my sons was worried that I wasn't going to make it. But I'm here to speak out against this development taking place on the eighty-six acre. I believe that a lot of other developments could be approved that would not hurt, but would enhance Griffin and Spalding County, especially the neighborhood. Neighborhood that's been there for years and years, had people who were born there, they moved out there to be in the country, they wanted to have a family there that would live in a wholesome attitude. But now I see that the wholesomeness of what is being questioned and is much against is that there will be the reinforcement by the county commissioners that when this does go to vote, that you will be thinking about those hundreds of families who have been raised there, have grown to be strong citizens, workers, people who had jobs that paid big taxes. And this development there now, Tomachichi, it seems that it's just all being thrown away. Before they ring the bell, my impression is that this one million square foot building will be dependent on Fortune five-hundred companies come to do leases there. But according to what I see and hear on the TV, that our economy is not very strong right now, and that we don't need a building a million square feet when there's one, two miles up the road. And then now there's another million square foot building that they want to build, and that's going to disrupt that neighborhood, that, those families, and all the, those who have been there years and years and years have had a strong input into this country. And I, I'm concerned too, that two o'clock, three o'clock, four o'clock, five o'clock, if you go down Taylor Street going toward Atlanta, if you're going west, you just got to, might pack your lunch because you're going to be in traffic for a long time. And it's getting worse. It's not getting better. But, uh, back in February, I would like to read this, uh, "House panel rolls with bill to allow bigger rigs on roads." A state house panel gave the green light to.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Mr. Chairman, that's all who have signed up to speak this evening?
Vote.
There was a sign-up sheet there for each of the.
They are, they are for the.
Public hearings.
Public hearings for each of the applications.
We haven't got that far into it.
We haven't gotten there yet.
Nope, nope. That's okay. Thank you all for coming and voicing your opinion. Item number six, minutes. One, consider approval of the minutes for the Spalding County Board of Commissioners' special call meeting retreat on March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, and the special, Spalding County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting and executive session on April fourth, twenty-twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some of you.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favors, please signify by raising your hand. Five-zero. Motion carries. Thank you. Old Business. Item number seven, lift from the table, application twenty-two dash zero-nine-Z, Clinton C. O'Brien and Sandra O'Brien Mallory, owners, HFG Development, agent four-eighty Tomachichi Road, approximately eighty-five point nine, located in landlot forty-nine and fifty of the third land district. Applicant, applicant request rezoning from AR1 Agriculture and Residential and R2 Single Family Residential to C2 Manufacturing. Do I have a motion to list from the table?
Motion to lift.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Five-zero. Ms. Morales?
Yes, sir. Well, good afternoon, commissioners. We're back at it again with the application twenty-two zero-nine-Z. After revising the staff report like I was instructed by the, by the commission, I have, as you can see, made it a little bit more easier to follow, starting with the current zoning of the property, which you see it's AR1 and R2, which is Agriculture and Residential and low, low to medium density, single-family residential. They are requesting to rezone to C2, which is manufacturing, and they are also located within the AKB overlay, which regulates, as you can see, compliance to zoning ordinance development standards. They have followed all the requirements for that overlay, including the traffic study and the site plan revisions. Now, if you see under utility and infrastructure and transportation, our numbers are a little different than what was given to us in this, in the traffic study that the applicant provided. But we believe that the numbers that the applicant provided within their, their traffic study is the most up-to-date and current numbers that could be populated. Other than that, as you can see, we have given them an extensive list of conditions, to be exact, seventeen. And if you would like I could go through all of them, or if you have any questions, we can go from there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, your, your direction to staff at the last meeting on January the twenty-sixth, basically were focused on three items. One being access on Chi Hall Road, the second being the, the buffers, the required buffers, and how those buffers were planted for visual and sound to, to best obstruct the view and to reduce noise. And also for staff to review the, the previous staff reports, and there were many, and determine any inconsistencies and correct those as best they could. Ms. Morales did an excellent job of going through those several staff reports and making the determination as to where those errors did lie and correcting those errors in that, in that staff report. She, she corrected the numbers. There, you've, you've heard tonight about open records requests that were not responded to appropriately. And I, I just want to, to impress upon you that, that that was not the fault of Ms. Morales. The information was not as readily available as it should have been by, should have been left by, by prior staff. Therefore, the traffic study that was done by the applicant and was submitted, the attorney, Ms. Griffiths, was not aware of it. The, the neighbors who had submitted open records requests were not aware of it. When they spoke to you in January, they were not being the least bit disingenuous. They had made these requests, and the information had not been provided to them. That has, has since been remedied, and that, that information has been provided. And as Ms. Morales says, she believes that the numbers provided by the applicant, which are higher than our numbers, are probably more accurate.
Thank you. Does the board want to go through the seventeen, uh, conditions?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm sorry, one more thing. We did, um, let Mr. Jones and Ms. Griffiths know that they would be provided an opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Okay. Would you, are you suggesting that now?
It, it might be better now so that if you have questions, you can address those to them as well as to staff.
Okay, county manager, which one first?
Mr. Jones, you're up.
The applicant first, yeah. Chairman, commissioners, Stephen Jones, law firm in Taylor English Duma, address sixteen-hundred Parkwood Circle, suite two-hundred, Atlanta, Georgia. Can you hear me now? I'll say that again into the microphone. Chairman, commissioners, my name is Stephen Jones, the law firm of Taylor English Duma. On behalf of the applicant of this application, my address is sixteen-hundred Parkwood Circle, suite two-hundred, Atlanta, Georgia, three-zero, three-zero-three-three-nine. Thank you, as always, for the opportunity to appear before you. At the last meeting, this board tabled this for three reasons, as Ms. Wyndham set out. Staff then since revised the staff report to address those issues. I'm going to reference this document, which I'm also going to show on the screen, but I wanted to pass it out, if I may. Chairman? Commissioners, I can run through the full recitation of the project, but I think if technical difficulties. Okay, the clicker's not working. Next slide, please. This is the, this is the overview of the property. This is from your tax map. Here's a zoomed in of the subject property with its frontage on AKB. Next slide, please. This is the curb cut, as we've discussed earlier in this meeting, and as we all know, they are limited at curb cuts on Arthur K. Bolton. This property benefits from one of them. Next slide, please. This is the zoning map overlay as it's current, as it currently exists. The property is split zoned AR1 and R2. Next slide, please. The future land use map designates this property as right for employment and development, as you will see, uh, on this excerpt from your most recent comp plan. Next slide, please. This is the site plan for the building that you saw, uh, back in January. Next slide, please. I just want to walk through quickly some of the key points. We'll circle back to these slides later, but just to highlight some of the things as a refresher for some of the things we discussed at the January meeting. This building is substantially below grade with the road frontages and the, and the right-of-way at Tomachichi and Chi Hall. You'll see on this excerpt, this is the site, the site at the intersection of Tomachichi and Chi Hall, which is in the bottom left-hand corner of, uh, this picture. And you'll see those elevations where, at this point, the building is going to be roughly 20 feet below grade. You'll see the 800 line and the, uh, 780 line. Next slide, please. This is on the exact opposite side. This would be the east side of the property, adjacent to those other tracks. You'll see here that this point is also substantially below those properties. You'll see the elevation lines at the top of, you'll see that retaining wall right there at the curve in the property, going from approximately 810 down to below 790, roughly 787. So this property is down below those road grades and down below the elevation of existing properties. Next slide, please. You'll just see another slide shifted slightly to the north. From there, you can see the toe of the, that retaining wall and just the substantial decrease in elevation where the building pad and parking pad will sit. Next slide, please. This is, uh, looking on Tomachichi Road, you'll see again the decrease in elevation there. Next slide, please. And this is a color rendering of the building and the vegetated areas. We'll get back to this when we talk about the conditions regarding buffers, which is one of the things that you directed staff to look at. Next slide, please. Again, a rendering, this is from the application, AKB ordinance calls for a rendering, uh, standard industrial building type style. Next slide, please. We've been through the market demand, the ad valorem tax base for the property, its suspected ad valorem tax increase. Again, the size of the building at a minimum 100,000 square feet is aimed towards Fortune 500 companies. As projected based on size, would obviously be in flux based on the company that actually locates there, between 200 to 350 employees, with an estimated building value of $100 million, based on the comp of Renai in Green Valley, as well as others. Plug that into the tax assessors ad valorem calculator, that results in an additional ad valorem tax of $1.4 million a year. Next slide, please. Just the history of the application. We started back in April 2022, filed in June. Three Rivers Regional Commission, uh, issued their DRI report and conducted their DRI comment period in July, with no comments or recommended conditions. On August 3rd, the planning commission tabled the application for a town hall, which the applicant volunteered and held. Next slide, please. Planning commission considered it on November, recommended approval. And December 5th, this board tabled, on December 26th, this board tabled, and it tabled two, and this is an excerpt from your minutes, to review the staff report and correct any items that may be in error and define the buffers for the projects as proposed. That motion was carried unanimously by this board. Next slide, please. What was that discussion? Chairman requested that discussion about buffers, at which point, uh, on behalf of the applicant, the board discussed the proposed buffers, which are on the conditions that I passed out before you, which except, which, except for two areas, three, if you're talking the numbered, uh, conditions, mirror the conditions that are in your revised staff report, so I won't go by them line by line. But I wanted to talk about the buffers. What we discussed with the board at the last meeting regarding buffers were two things. Number one, we talked generally about this idea of minimum and average buffers, because on the site plan, you remember, there are pinch points on, right at Chi Hall, one point, and one point where that retaining wall is on the east side that we'll get back to, where you have to pinch down just in those select spots, the buffer, but then along the remainder, we would have this average buffer. And so those would be, and these are the same exact numbers that we discussed last time, would be along all properties that are not along the roadway, so mainly those properties on the east side of the subject property, a 50-foot minimum buffer and a 75-foot average buffer. And then along all road frontages, we discussed a 50-foot average buffer, uh, we discussed a, sorry, a 25-foot minimum buffer and a 50-foot average buffer. And both those buffers consist of an undisturbed buffer component with a planted buffer component behind it, which provides a natural appearance from the roadway of the undisturbed nature, and the planted buffer behind it ensures that evergreens grow and evergreens are planted in a manner to make sure that you still can't see through the undisturbed buffer. Evergreens also provide a, um, sound abatement mechanism. There were other discussions as well. Number one, no access from Chi Hall. I believe that request came from Commissioner Flowers-Taylor. The applicant consented to that. What the applicant has proposed in these revised conditions, and which are reflected in your staff's recommended conditions, is that that access be only for emergency services, service vehicles. You heard some public comments in your open public comment period about that, so we just wanted to clarify that that is a Knox box. Knox is boxes, a proprietary name brand system, which emergency first responders use to access, um, locations, apartment buildings, industrial facilities, and only first responders can get in to the Knox box. Uh, when the Knox box is opened during some instances, and I believe Ms. Morales has discussed with the fire marshal the operation of those, but there are various mechanisms where, again, not just anybody can get in, only first responders can get in, and that is two, that is for twofold. Number one, that is helpful for an insurance perspective. Number two, it's helpful for, in case there was ever any emergency at this facility, two points of ingress and egress for fire, EMS, and police is important in case, let's say, one entrance got blocked by a fallen tree or a natural disaster or something like that. But again, a Knox box can only, and that's the proprietary design of it, be accessed by emergency services.
So just for clarification, it can't be accessed by the property owner, the people that are actually there. It can only be accessed by emergency personnel?
That's correct. And there are mechanisms where if you access it or use it, that you can even have that alert the first responders. So it is, you'll see it a lot on apartment complexes, like on gravel roads, a lot of times with residential developments, when you have to have multiple accesses to get in the back on roads where, uh, public traffic should not be traveling. You'll see like gravel easements and things like that.
So while this will be a second entrance, that entrance can only be used by EMS, fire, and, and police. It, it could not actually ever possibly be used by the, the property owners, right?
Correct.
Yeah, it's actually locked and, um, only accessible by emergency personnel.
That's correct. Ms. Morales?
Yeah, and that, that is correct. So, um, after speaking with the fire marshal, he did explain that there are several Knox boxes here. For example, Renai, uh, Renai has it where, um, if the key is removed, the fire alarms immediately go off and alerts the emergency, uh, response teams, and it will not go off until a code goes, a, a code is inserted and the keys replaced back. Um, he talked very well about Knox boxes. Um, he actually encouraged to have a Knox box here, mainly if the, like Mr. Jones stated, if the first entrance is compromised, there is all a secondary entrance for the emergency vehicles to go in.
Um, is, is there any way to get around a Knox box?
Uh-uh. From my understanding, with the conversations with, um, the marshal, there is not.
So both for, like, 18-wheelers and civilian vehicles, that, that entrance effectively would not exist?
So the way I was explained is there's different ways that you can set it up. The, the ma- the most one that they used is as soon as you remove the key, the fire alarms go off. So if, let's just say you are the property owner and you're trying to give access to a 18-wheeler to go through the property, as soon as you remove the key or you open that Knox box, it immedi- the fire alarms immediately go off. So you'll eventually get fired, the fire department, EMS, and everybody en route towards your, your site. So it's similar to pulling a fire alarm, in a sense.
Do y'all remember having a work session on that about a year ago when they actually spoke to us?
Mm-hmm. About development department.
And how that was the way that they were gonna start doing it for, when there's a fire. So, yeah, we should be familiar with that.
Mr. Dutton?
The other discussion was to, and I believe this was...
Yep. Go ahead.
I was about to reference, but I was gonna let him finish talking. I believe this was Commissioner Dutton's request, uh, about how do we ensure that the planning, planted buffer will achieve its goal? You have a recommended condition, your staff report, for a, uh...
Number 12.
Landscape plan to be submitted with the land disturbance permit application. That would typically already be submitted with the LDP application. So, Commissioner Dutton, what we've added in 13, you'll see my handwritten red line, which I'll show up on the screen.
Before and for those three years.
Correct. So then you get both effects, which it already is, already would be reviewed by an arborist or landscape architect, but as part of that landscape plan, but we just wanted to make that explicit, satisfy your request.
And, Mr. Chairman, on the staff condition for number 13, uh, I'm sorry, number 12C, um, staff added planted and maintained, um, to add that additional, um, protection.
Continue on, Ms. Johnson.
So, uh, talk back to buffers. Again, the buffer discussion from the January 26th meeting, the explicit back and forth between the applicant and the board, were these notions of the minimum and average buffering, specifically 25 feet minimum, 50-foot average along road frontages, 50-foot minimum, 75-foot average along properties that are not, or that, that are contiguous and not separated by a road. And that, those, again, both have those dual components of planted and undisturbed. Next slide, please.
Again, the, the intention there is to make sure that the sight line, uh, is pleasing to the people around it, so that you can't, you're not just looking at a giant wall of a building, there's, there's trees blocking. You might still see from certain angles the tops of the building, even though, even though it's, uh, 25 foot lower than the surrounding ground, but like, the idea is that it's a full barrier around it as, as much as we can.
You get both components. You get the natural as well as the planted. That's correct. And then you also have the natural, uh, berm, because the building is so substantially below the elevation of surrounding properties and road frontages. Now, to make clear, the amended staff report that you have in your application, that we didn't receive until late Friday, has a condition which does not track these two. So that's why I passed out what you have here, is to track what the discussion was with the board about the minimum and average buffers in one and two. And in your revised staff report, those are consolidated only into condition one.
Okay, well, let's make sure we're not lost here in this. Eva, we're talking about what we want is in item one of the conditions, all the way around now.
Mr. Chairman, we actually would ask that you give us more specificity, because in, in reviewing the video and the minutes, um, there was not clear direction from the board as to what your desire for those buffers would be. We did, in the staff report at number 12C, also add, um, well, it, it reads now, "Said staggered double row of evergreen trees shall be planted and maintained so as to significantly reduce the visibility of property improvements for all sides." Because, um, one of Commissioner Dutton's main points was the visibility and, and making sure that they, that those, um, evergreens were planted such that even though there's 33% of, of di- different species, that they were planted such that it actually would reduce visibility and not be too far apart, either vertically or horizontally.
So, so on the average buffer width, we'll average 50, at 50. However, for those...
It's a 50-foot minimum, 75 average.
No, it says a 25-foot minimum. Where, where's the paper? Okay, I was reading further down here where it said a 25-foot.
You were on number two.
Okay, so along Tomachichi and Chi Hall, Chi Hall, and those are both sides where there is no one living, um...
There's a, there's a road there, as opposed to...
Right, as opposed to. And we, and we talked about the fact that the roadway, you have the, the footage for the roadway, you have the footage for the right-of-way. And so that actually gives the individual more, but I was thinking that this was a 25-foot, 25-foot buffer.
Yeah, it's a 15-foot planted buffer, and then the 10-foot undisturbed.
And a 10-foot undisturbed.
Yep.
That's the minimum that any buffer can be. So the average will be 50.
Right.
And then on the one side where the family is directly contiguous, they'll have a 10-foot undisturbed buffer and a 40-foot...
That's gonna be a, yeah, 10-foot undisturbed and a 40-foot planted buffer, with that, like, wall that's there as well.
Okay.
On that side where the, where it's contiguous and it's a, a residential parcel, that's the 50-foot minimum with the 75-foot averages. The road frontages are the 25-foot minimum with the 50-foot averages. And the reason for that difference is to Commissioner Flowers-Taylor's point, where it's adjacent to a roadway. You got an 80-foot ri- uh, wide road before the buffer even starts between adjacent properties.
Right away, yeah.
So when you add those together, you know?
Yeah.
155.
Okay. So, uh, let's make sure, let's cover the bu- the buffer area right now. We all square on the buffer area? We've heard the stuff on the gate. Now we're working our way through the second part of it, which is the buffer. We're all good with what, uh, item number one says, item one and two said.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate, that the staff report does not differentiate between, um, along the road or along a contiguous property owner.
So then, why is this not...
The staff report consolidated one and two.
Okay.
That the applicant does not agree with that consolidation.
Okay, so the applicant is asking that it be separated into two items?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
I don't have a problem with that.
How's everybody else feel about it?
This, this is exactly, I mean, we've been working on those for over a year now, and, uh...
I'm sorry, are y'all gonna let your comments from me before you make decisions on these? And you might sign up to see a couple of comments?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Yes, yes.
If you make decisions, I'd be very prepared to hear from us, but it sounds like you're making some...
No, we're not. We're just making sure we are where we are with, with him.
Yeah, we understand what it is we're saying.
Thank you for your comment. May appear that way, but we aren't there yet. Okay? Commissioner Dutton, did you have a comment? On the buffer?
So, uh, again, like, the, the issues here were entrances, buffers, and lines of sight. Um, like, oh, excuse me, entrances, the, the buffer and line of sight, and then, and then trucks. We've solved the issue with trucks. There are no through trucks on Chi Hall or Tomachichi, period. There's no way to get trucks onto Chi Hall or Tomachichi, uh, legally, and there's no entrance or exit onto Tomachichi or Chi Hall from this property. Those are the things that we asked for. The applicant is, is good with that. The second thing was, um, buffers, we have massaged that and went back and forth and worked tirelessly to come up with a, a, a plan here to address the very valid concerns of the, the people in the neighborhood. Um, I, I think... There's no way to get trucks onto Chiha or Tomachichi legally. And there's no entrance or exit onto Tomachichi or Chiha from this property. Those are the things that we asked for. The applicant is, is good with that. The second thing was, um, buffers, we have massaged that and went back and forth and worked tirelessly to come up with a, 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 a plan here to address the very valid concerns of the, the, the people in the neighborhood. I, I think not only is this a great, um, way to work this out with all these special conditions here, in this instance, I think it would be great if we continued to use this as the model as other folks continue to build. And then the, um, so we have the entrance and then the, and then the trucks that can't be there, and the, the berms. So that's what we asked for last time. Um, that's what we've, they've come back with now.
Okay. All right. Any other comments on this?
Those are the only items that we actually asked. We addressed those.
All right.
So.
To be clear, the staff report substantially increases those buffer numbers. We pro- we proposed back to you the buffer numbers that were discussed at the last meeting.
So that's. These, these are the ones that we discussed the last meeting.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay.
Next slide, please. You'll just see an example of the road frontage buffers here with the undisturbed buffer, ten feet with the twenty, with the fifteen planted buffer behind it, showing minimums there. But then if you reference back and we'll get back to it, the color rendering that actually depicts what an average buffering looks like in those pinch points. Next slide, please. You'll see that, you'll see the dichotomy of them here. Next slide, please. Here is that increased buffer against the residential parcel of forty and ten minimums, forty-foot undisturbed minimum, ten-foot planted minimum for an average of a seventy-five foot buffer across that entire stretch where it's contiguous, the residential parcel. Next slide, please. To, I wanted to point out the, this is a great example of, uh, previous slide, please, of buffer minimums versus averaging, and actually previous slide, if you don't mind, before this one. You'll see here why averaging and minimums are important. If you look at this wall and this gray down from roughly eight hundred, eight oh four of the adjacent residential parcel down to sub seven ninety at the, uh, parking lot floor, we, we need the minimums, especially the minimums that we've set forth in these proposed conditions so we can adequately grade the site and create that natural depression, that natural berm. So that's important. That's, that's pinch point number one. Next slide, two. This is along Tomachichi. This is pinch point number two. You'll see where we have to get into, uh, get up to the minimum along Tomachichi here for this grading of the aspect, this grading aspect of the plan. But then everywhere else, we can expand back out to the averages. And to get to the average, right, you have to go above the minimum. And I want to make this point clear, before the last meeting, the January meeting, the applicant expended substantial funds to have its engineer go through and analyze these grading aspects so that it could come up with these minimums and these average numbers. That's not something that's typically done at the conceptual plan, but they did that because y'all asked and the community asked, what's are the buffers that you can do and how do we make this better? So of their own volition, they did that to get to those numbers, and it's not something that's common.
Thank you.
Again, I'm arcing back to the color rendering where you'll see just an example of how the minimums were. Look to that corner piece right there on the top of the plan. You'll see an illustration of minimums and averaging. Look to the left side of this plan, right, where you see that circular driveway come around. You see that's the minimum, but then everywhere else you bump back out to the average and substantially larger than the average where you can. Next slide, please. So these are the conditions that are before you. They mirror staff's conditions except for two spots. Staff's condition number one, which is we've replaced with our conditions number one and two. And then staff condition number eleven, which if I'm not mistaken, I don't want to put words in Ms. Wyndham's mouth, but I think that when it's getting, the staff is proposing to strike staff recommended condition number eleven. Nah, I can walk through all of these, but they are in your staff report. If you would like me to run through them, Commissioners, I'd be more than happy to do that.
I don't think so. Somebody need him to walk through those? All right. I think we've worked these. Okay. Anything else from you, sir?
You'll just notice thirteen's got my handlined edit to adjust, uh, address Commissioner Dutton's point. That's all I have. Chairman, if I may, reserve time for rebuttal. Thank you so much. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you.
All right.
Ms. Griffiths?
Thank you. Melissa Griffiths, thirty-two South Court Square, Nunez, Georgia, three zero two six three. We were present on January twenty-six, twenty twenty-three at the public hearing and have reviewed the minutes, and we don't believe that the staff report accurately reflects what was discussed that night. Access on Chiha Road was to be removed in its entirety. I've been through the minutes and have highlighted where three of you Commissioners actually said you wanted no access on Chiha Road. There was never any discussion that night in reviewing the minutes and, uh, the video about any kind of knock box or kind of emergency exit. The applicant and his attorney both stood at this podium and said they agreed to removing the access and agreed to lowering the building by a hundred thousand square feet. When an applicant proffers a condition, they can't revoke it back, and that's what they're trying to do. The last condition that Mr. Jones just referenced was condition number eleven, where now they don't want to go back to the nine hundred thousand square feet, which is what they agreed to on January sixth of twenty twenty-three. They want that condition thrown out. When Mr. Jones goes through and says there was much discussion about the buffers and the condition that he came up with, that's not accurate. He was discussing it, but that's not what you all were discussing. Commissioner Dutton specifically asked a question about other industrial zones and were they required to have a hundred-foot buffer? And Ms. Morales said she could not speak to that because she was not the one that had done the reports, and so you all asked her to report back to you. And how she reported back to you was coming up with a staff report with conditions that are better for Spalding County and for the citizens of Spalding County, not one applicant. Condition number one that Ms. Morales generated with Ms. Wyndham's help has a seventy-foot buffer and a hundred-foot buffer average. And the reason why is because the applicant, in meeting with the citizens, offered to do that where they could. But that's not what they're offering to do in the condition that they gave you tonight. It's this, I don't know, smoke and mirrors. I'm not really sure what to call it, but it's definitely not what was presented previously and what was agreed to on January twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-three. The buffer, the other buffer comments, um, that are in the minutes, Commissioner Dutton again specifically said he wanted to know how close the trees would be in the double-staggered row. He wanted it to state it specifically so that they would have to touch in order for it to be a true barrier. None of the language in the applicant's proposed conditions that are different from the staff report include these things that you all as Commissioners gave your staff and your attorney to come up with the conditions. And I appreciate that you also gave us an opportunity to sit at the table. We did provide them the staff report with the edits, and they did make all of the corrections. And I appreciate that you all allowed us to be involved in that process. But it feels like we're being cut out of the process when staff comes up with comments from your direction and your minutes. And if you remember, there was a packed-out house that night, and everybody's comments were about the three things that y'all walked away from, sending us back to everybody look at again. And that night, when everyone left, you specifically said no access on Chiha Road. No access does not equal an emergency access. No access does not equal a knock box that a future applicant can come back in and try to get a future board to change that condition, and now it becomes a second access instead of an emergency access. The citizens are asking you to stick with what you said on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three and what direction you gave your staff at that time. I mean, in the staff report, it clearly says the use is not consistent with nearby zoning. Everywhere around is residential and agriculture zoned. So if you're going to approve this against the neighbors' request and make this spot zoning, then your conditions need to be specific enough to give them the protection they're asking for. What the staff report has done is gotten very specific so that your staff has a way to verify whether or not these conditions are being followed. The applicant's proposed conditions are better for the applicant. They're not better for the staff, they're not better for the county, and they're not better for the citizens. We're asking you to follow what your staff's recommending in regards to recommendations, not what the applicant wants. That does away with the entire process. Other comments were made that we have reviewed in the minutes, um, and they are all consistent with the conditions in staff's report, not in the applicant's proposed report. There have been violations of the Open Records Act. Like Ms. Wyndham stated earlier, we've requested documents for months, and the county just provided something last week that you've had since December of twenty twenty-two. The point of the Open Records Act and Open Meetings Act is so that citizens can see transparency in their government. When the county doesn't comply, not only is it illegal, but it creates a distrust amongst the taxpayers and the citizens. Then when you add on changes that an applicant makes that are completely polar opposite of what the citizens heard you all say in a meeting on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, it makes the whole process ineffective so that we're not working for the betterment of the county and the citizens. One of the issues regarding the buffers and the reason I jumped up and, and rudely interrupted to make sure I was gonna get to talk is, if you all remember, we had pictures we showed. A lot of that area is grass from the road all the way in, more than a hundred feet. So if they don't have to do anything, these neighbors are gonna see everything in this development, which goes against what Commissioner Dutton said on the twenty-sixth, that it's to protect the neighbors so they're not having to see all the truck traffic. They're not having to see this big building that is there. So if you take away this planted buffer and you just say, oh, twenty-five feet is okay because you add the road frontage in instead of the change in condition number one in the staff report, you completely do away with two or three of the people that specifically spoke up and said, I don't want to see the truck lights coming into my windows at night. Well, by taking away that buffer, that's exactly what's gonna happen. But if you keep the language that's proposed in your staff report, that helps alleviate that for these neighbors. The staff report has the correct measurements so that it will allow for that protection. We just believe tonight that the neighbors and taxpayers deserve more consideration than developer does. The staff has spent multiple hours working on this report. We appreciate their time and their dedication. I know Ms. Morales was kind of thrown in and had to review multiple things and get all of this together. But in the end of the day, even if we don't like the exact wording of all seventeen, the seventeen in her staff report are more reflective of what you all discussed at the meeting on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, and what the citizens that spoke in opposition on that night wanted you to address if you were going to approve it. Obviously, we would prefer, prefer that you deny this request in its entirety. But if you're not going to deny it, then we would like you to follow staff's recommended conditions with that wording and not change the conditions that the applicant is asking for because what you're doing is taking away from the protection of the neighbors that have to deal with this. They, they were here. They've been here for years on Chiha Road and on Tomachichi Road, paying taxes. Yes, their taxes are never gonna add up to the one point four million that Mr. Jones showed on his report. But they've been here in this community, helping build this community, and they deserve more consideration, and that's what they're asking you of tonight. I noticed in the application packet that it included Mr. Jones's constitutional objection, but did not collect, um, contain the citizens' constitutional objection. We did properly file one months before the January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, um, meeting, and so I just wanted to remind you all that that is also part of the record, just so you know everything that's in front of you. We appreciate your time. If you have any questions I can answer, I'd be happy to and appreciate your consideration on these items. Thank you.
Questions for?
Yeah. And if no one else signed up to speak?
Questions for Ms. Griffiths?
This is your quick rebuttal? The operative word there is quick?
Commissioners, I'd like to just address a few things. Now regarding that condition eleven, uh, Ms. Griffiths said that we committed to reducing the building size. We didn't. We made a speculation based on what an engineering constraint could do. Again, this building hasn't been engineered. It's not a commitment to do anything. It's a discussion of potential engineering implications. Trees, she said that the trees should touch to Commissioner Dutton's request and to what's in staff's recommended conditions and applicant-proposed conditions. That's what an arborist is for. That's what a landscape architect is for. And that's the reason that landscape plans are submitted with land disturbance app- permit applications. Regarding the buffers, remember the pinch points we went through and how this building is designed. That's why we have to have the minimums that we set and the minimums we discussed. If we could go back and, and all watch the YouTube video, but I hope we remember the discussion that was had about that and the discussion that we had earlier in this meeting about those minimums and the extensive work that this board put in to consider those minimums that night and tonight. They're needed to get into those pinch points and orient the building in a way that will be best suited from an engineering standpoint. The building is also substantially below grade. I want to remind you of that. So we add those buffers in, and they create a si- they create a substantial barrier for truck lights, for, for noise, for visual impact. In the areas where you may be able to see, uh, uh, where there may be grassing or where anyone may be concerned about the buffer, imagine the building's fourteen to twenty feet below that, right? That is a substantial effect. The applicant's recommended conditions as their modif- as, and their two modifications to the staff's recommended conditions and the most recent, very recent revised staff report don't reflect what the applicant proposed. The applicant proposed a di- a, a set of conditions at the first meeting. There were nine conditions then. Through comment, through community engagement, through engagement with the planning commission and this board, we are now at seventeen. And these are conditions that we put together to satisfy those concerns. So with that, I'd ask you to vote consistent with your comprehensive plan, consistent with the planning commission's recommendation, consistent with our discussion right here on January twenty-sixth, and vote to approve this application with the listed conditions that I've distributed. Again, we've worked very hard over these almost past year to make sure we got this right, to make sure that we heard all the concerns and addressed those concerns and ha- found a happy meeting point between them. If the board has any questions about these specific proposed conditions, I'd be happy to address them at this time. Thank you for your consideration. As always, it's a pleasure to appear before you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the, the staff is, is, um, is grateful to both Mr. Jones and Ms. Griffiths, to the applicant and the complainant for, for their engagement and their assistance in formulating, um, this staff report. And while we understand that there may be adjustments to our staff recommend- recommendations number one, ten, and eleven based on the conversations that have been had here tonight, we would not, we would ask that you not accept the applicant's conditions as presented because there are, there are differences in the staff recommendations beyond just number one, ten, and eleven that are, are based on, um, your comments and staff's recommendations.
Wait, which specific comments are you referring to, Stephanie?
From the last meeting.
Well, number twelve is, is different. Number seventeen is different. Number sixteen is omitted from the applicant's proposed conditions, and I, I believe it was there before.
So we, we've got.
So wait a minute. So the applicant handed me a copy of their conditions, and I already had a copy of conditions, and number sixteen's on both, right?
Yeah, on mine.
No acc- the access point, the subject property on Chiha shall not line up with any existing residential driveway. Right?
It is, well, it, we actually changed it to, to reflect the emergency access point, which is more clear if you are going to allow this auxiliary access. if you are going to allow this auxiliary access on Chiha as an emergency access.
Can we get the staff conditions brought up on the screen?
Stephanie, you said 11?
11 is the auxiliary access.
Uh-huh. So that's reference to the 16 as well?
Yes, and that is the Knox box condition. And everyone at the January 26 meeting was very concerned with access on Chiha Road.
Yes, and I think there's been like a misunderstanding, maybe not a misunderstanding, but my comments about no access on Chiha Road refer directly to any truck traffic related to that business.
Or personal vehicles for the folks that were working there.
Well, yeah, or employees.
Business, anything to do with that.
Anything to do with that. And so while there was some concern about us changing our minds, I think that we have a responsibility as a board to still look at the safety part of it.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, you know, the request for the Knox box, to me, is a no-brainer. You've got a million-square-foot building. You might have sprinklers, but I'm just simply saying, that was, because someone quoted my comment, my comment was that no traffic having to do with that business should be allowed to be on Chiha Road.
I think that's what Commissioner Dutton's point was making when he was talking about the Knox boxes. And I think that's what he was trying to, or what he did explain.
Okay, so, and then the other thing that I want to...
All right, so let's make sure where we are as a board before we get into this. We believe that no business traffic should come in to an emergency exit.
Trucks or personal vehicles, that should be... Emergency personnel only, if the fire department needs to get a fire truck.
Forever and ever. This is not changing with new people getting the land or anything else.
So, the idea that it might change, like, exists. 20 years from now, another board could come and change it. Even if we didn't put that there, another board could come and allow them to add it there, the whole thing, the whole driveway. So the idea that we're allowing emergency, that we are thinking about allowing emergency access now, like, doesn't lock anyone in the future. But even if we didn't put that secondary auxiliary emergency access, like, a board in the future could still come and add that, just as easy as someone could. So I appreciate everyone's thoughts on that, but a board in the future could come and put six curb cuts off Chiha. They could! They could! That would be ridiculous, but they could. So the idea that if we allow an emergency exit now, that's going to lead to more in the future, like, those two ideas don't make sense together. Like, again, I hate to be frustrated about this a little bit, but we've heard some complaints tonight. You know, someone brought up that there were 16 other buildings already built, and that these search buildings were going to increase drugs and human trafficking and pollution. And yet, with those 16 other buildings, we haven't seen an increase in drugs or human trafficking or pollution. Like, so, the same speech said both things. So, again, if we could not have outbursts from the crowd. So, the idea that the lakes at Green Valley have increased human trafficking in Spalding County is absurd. Like, that's absurd. Look, there are legitimate concerns here. Sightlines are a legitimate concern. Trucks driving down roads and destroying our roads. Those are legitimate concerns. Like, we're not saying that they're not, but things like, there's going to be more drugs, that... Sheriff, have you arrested anyone for drugs in the lakes of Green Valley? Has there been one arrest? Like, no! That's a totally illusory complaint, like, it doesn't exist. There are actual quantifiable issues, like trucks, like traffic, okay? And that's what we're talking about. But like, to say, hey, if we do something now, that might lead to something in the future, like, you know, we might all be killed by polar bears. Like, who knows? Like, it's the same level of, these things don't make any sense together. So the idea that we could make an emergency entrance now, and that that would somehow lead to six curb cuts on Chiha, like, it doesn't make any sense. That's not something, we're not binding ourselves to that now. Like, that's just not how this works. Again, there's legitimate issues. We're trying to address those legitimate issues.
I think, I think the bottom line, when we were here in January, just to make it very simplistic, we asked the staff to come up with three recommendations, or at least address the three items that we have. So it's basically up to us to decide whether or not we feel like they've done that. Personally, where I sit, and with Commissioner Flowers-Taylor's great explanation about the Knox boxes and how the emergency vehicles should be there for safety reasons and not other vehicles, for businesses should be there, I think that staff has done the right job. They've done a good job as far as addressing the concerns we had back in January. Those were the items that we were discussing, and that's what they've done, where I sit.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment, and this is not to challenge you, Eva, but our ordinance says that, you know, this commercial development has a requirement for a 10-foot buffer, no more than that. So how did you get to 75 foot and then 100-foot average?
It was after a conversation that we had, but after the explanation that the attorney from the applicant gave, and with the conditions that they had brought forward and the way that the building is going to sit and the elevations, if you would like to go to the applicant's requested conditions, it would work because of the way that building is sitting into the lot.
My concern is that this is not what we're requiring everyone in the industrial area to do. And if our buffers that we have are insignificant and need to be more, then we should do that across the board.
And Commissioner Flowers-Taylor, I think the point is that you're absolutely right. This should be done across the board. That is why, from the beginning, the applicant discussed with the community development staff increasing the size of the buffers that were going to be required. And because this really is your first opportunity to develop a piece of property out on this, in AKB, in this commercial corridor, this is the time for you to make a template, basically, of what you expect to see down that corridor from now on.
So, and I guess I'm, and I'm not trying to change anything, this is just me talking over the top of my head. In the instances like where there are roadways, I know dirt costs money, but it seems that if their concern is that you're going to be able to see right through, wouldn't it make more sense to put a berm there more so than planting trees? Because the berm, if you have a six-foot berm, and then you're already 20 feet above where the bottom is, your site...
You have to bulldoze all the...
But I don't know that you want a pile of dirt. Is that your berm?
What I'm hearing, what the picture they showed us was there was no plants there in this one. I think one gentleman brought in and showed us, kind of, you can just see right through, there's some sticks sticking up. So, but, I mean, not to say that we can't, but I'm just saying, trees take a long time to grow, and people don't put grown trees in the ground. And while I know that Commissioner Dutton said that he thought that the trees, it should be where you see the trees printing, touching, any arborist will tell you, you cannot plant trees where they're touching.
They got to grow up to that.
Because they got to have that space.
Yeah. Please go back to that.
So, yeah, I'm just, you know, I was just wondering why we picked that number, because that's something, we got, you know, the rest of 16 to go, so do we need to do that? And I totally agree that any place there is a residential component involved, there needs to be a uniform way to protect site distance. We just, nope. Are you shaking your head? What?
Are you asking Mr. Jones a question?
Uh-uh. I'm just... I'm not asking you anything. I'm just simply saying, I don't know if it costs more money to plant those trees and to do what you're doing, but, you know, the short answer would be to put a berm and plant some grass or whatever over it. But, yeah, that's not on the list, but I'm just simply saying, for future references, we need to be able to tell people how we can correct any site distances without saying, I'm going to plant some trees, and in four years, you'll have a huge Leyland cypress that will block out sound and visual. That does nothing for the time between when you start and when it's done. So, I was just having a moment, really.
Mr. Chairman, there is a couple of things that I would like to point out, just because there had been a couple of additional clarifications that did not make it into the staff report, that is, the staff recommendations that are on the screen. And that is at number six, that at the end of the sentence where it says, Environmental Protection Division and any other regulatory agencies, I had just added the phrase "as required" because that made me more comfortable legally. And also, at number 16, I added the word "emergency." The emergency access point to the subject property on Chiha Road shall not line up with any existing residential driveway. Again, just to reiterate that that is emergency access only and not an access point for everyone.
Then 11 should also not be auxiliary, it should be emergency.
I would agree.
And can we also reduce that to a single lane access? I mean, if the idea is just to get fire trucks into it, then you just need a single lane?
So...
The auxiliary access? As opposed to like a two-lane road?
Well, number 10 should be emergency.
Or, yeah, emergency, yeah. Yeah, number 10 and number 11 need to be emergency. We're sort of making the thought bubble of the motion.
That's right, just the thought bubble.
I haven't got there yet.
Well, I think we just need to talk about where we are. Are you guys good with this requirement for the 50 and 75 and 100-foot buffer in number I just think it's excessive.
Attorney, the staff attorney, you believe that number one is the...
Staff condition number one.
I believe that staff condition number one takes into consideration comments that have been made by this board, by the applicant, and also by the complainants. There has been, this situation has been quite fluid for many, many months, and therefore, staff's expectation was not that we would come in here and you would just blanket approve every condition that we recommended. We expected there to be some change, given the fluidity, so it's up to this board.
All right, so we agree with staff condition number one.
Yep.
We want changes to 6, 11, 16, and 10.
Hold on, I'm trying to keep track.
So, just to be clear, you're approving the 75 and...
They're not approving anything. There's no motion yet.
Sorry. Agreeing with...
We're crafting staff recommendations.
Crafting, yes.
We're crafting conditions here.
All right, so 6...
So 1 on the staff recommendations.
Yes, on the sheet, on the board. 1, 6, which is Stephanie's, as needed.
As required.
As required.
Yeah, we should add "as required" there.
16, same basic issue, wasn't it?
Emergency, calling it emergency access.
Calling it the emergency. Number 11, calling it emergency.
Yep.
10, also.
Oh, yeah.
Number 11 is questionable as to, as to your acceptance of it, that... Based on your comments, I'm not sure that that is...
Yeah, no, I agree. What if we...
Are you saying scratch 11?
I'm not saying that, no, sir.
What if we...
Yeah, you want us to consider scratching 11.
And based on your comments, I think that you are considering it, I just...
Okay, go ahead. Commissioner Dutton?
So, can we use then 11 to reduce the emergency access to a single lane? Again, to further...
Just do away with 11.
Well, I'd like it to be a true emergency access, as opposed to, at some point in the future, being able to be changed into...
And we could add that language at number 16. It would fit appropriately and shall be a single lane.
Okay.
So do away with 11 and add the 16.
So, will an emergency vehicle, a fire truck, be able to come into a one-lane driveway? That's...
It's still 12-foot.
You think so? Okay.
It was 12, you know.
I mean, I know it can ride on a lane, but if you got to make a turn to get in, and it's one lane...
Ryan, thoughts on this? Do you know more about this?
I mean, when it turns on...
One lane.
Yeah, one lane should be fine.
Okay, hold it. Do you have a comment?
No, we needed to have the crowd...
If I may? The 75 and 100 on the minimum and maximum substantially hurts this design. I want to remind the board of the averages and those pinch points that we showed on the plan, where you have to have the minimums. The 75 minimum hurts those pinch points and substantially affects this design. If you want to hear from Mr. Palmer, he's here and can elaborate on the technicalities of those pinch points, but 70 minimum, 100 average is a detriment to this building.
Okay, we got that. Thank you.
Do we want to hear from him?
No, I don't think so. All right, one lane. Ryan, is that big enough to be able to...
That's big enough for a truck, long as you have the gate recessed in just enough to make it turn straight out.
What we want...
Yeah, it's going to be, I agree almost.
Eva, what we want is one lane is large enough to take in fire, truck, and everything else. This is a one lane. This is not two lanes divided or anything else. This is open the gate.
Just enough for a vehicle to come in.
And the lot, fire engine, ambulance, deputies' vehicles can all come in there to put out, save a situation or anything else. So everybody understands.
Yes, sir.
I want to talk about January, when we had the meeting, and the first time we talked about not having a closed, closing off on Chiha. We all agreed that we didn't want any business vehicles coming in on Chiha. Then it got into a life safety issue of what about an emergency situation where at the front gate, coming off of 16, two vehicles trying to leave a fire crashed into each other, and nothing can get in. Consequently, this is a fire, safety, life issue, nothing to do with afraid of later on or anything else. We have to have basically two entrances all the time to be able to bring safety vehicles in. So, yes, it was, we don't want businesses to come in, any business vehicles coming in off of Chiha. We agree with the citizens, what they said. We don't want any of those vehicles on Chiha. We want them all to come in off of 16, circle around, come back in to return off of 16.
Mr. Chairman, would this language be acceptable for number 16? The emergency access point to the subject property on Chiha Road shall not line up with any existing residential driveway and shall be a single lane wide enough to accommodate emergency vehicles.
You all agree with that? I agree with that. Everybody agree with that? James? You want to hear it again?
Yeah, can you read it again?
Yes. The emergency access point to the subject property on Chiha Road shall not line up with any existing residential driveway and shall be a single lane wide enough to accommodate emergency vehicles.
And that eliminates item 11.
All right, so we're all, all of us are pretty well square right now. Any more discussion on...
I just, I hate the fact that we're going to go with this extended buffer, and I'm going to say why, because we've not required it of anyone else. The lady who spoke about the 100-foot buffer of the building over in an industrial park, they have their own criteria for what a green park is supposed to be. This is the other side of the street. It's not connected to the Development Authority, and so there are not these requirements. And when we go from saying that we require a building to have a 10-foot buffer to requiring them to have a 100-foot buffer, that's excessive for that particular group of people, because we've not made anybody, out of all the stuff that's been built, do that. And that's where my concern is, is that we're going overreach in terms of that, because it's not our policy. We're asking them to go 90 feet over what we require in our ordinance to make a buffer there. So I just wish you would consider going with a lesser buffer.
All right. I'm now talking to each of the commissioners. Commissioner Johnson, thoughts before we make a motion?
I know staff's recommendation was the 50, 75, I believe.
75, 100. Seventy-five, one hundred.
Except for next to that house.
I'm okay with that.
Except for next to that house, which goes down to the fifteen and forty.
At a point.
Yeah, yeah, or fifteen and sixty, which is next to, like, that, the house in the northeast.
It's contiguous to it.
But then you also have the wall that's there and it drops down.
Okay.
I, I, I think our question would be staff's recommendation or applicant's recommendation because we have, there's a number one and then there's a number one and two.
I, I think we're all talking about staff's number one.
We're all talking staff, I'm talking staff recommendation. All right, Commissioner Bolden?
I'm good with staff's recommendation on that one. Definitely good with the entrance, the emergency entrance.
Could you speak into the microphone, they can't hear you?
I'm good with it.
Okay. Commissioner Flowers-Taylor?
I'm good with all the changes except for the requirements for the, the buffer. I feel like it's gonna come back and bite us. We, we, you know, we're doing it, we're doing it to them. If we don't do it to the next people, that sets us up for them to come back and say, you made a special issue for us and you've never done it to anybody else before and now you're not doing it afterwards. I'm just look, I'm not trying to go to jail with y'all.
I, I hope it's the same applicant that keeps building east and?
I have a, I have a proposal. There's a happy, there is a medium point where you could beat the middle between the applicant proposed and the staff proposed and potentially not have a significant detriment on the design of the building as proposed. The seventy-five, one hundred could significantly hamper the size and marketability of the building. We can, yeah, I just talked to the engineer, Mr. Palmer, and we could do a fifty, seventy-five. We don't know that that would shake out in engineering, but it might. But a hundred, a seventy-five and a one hundred, we know will not work.
Commissioner Dutton?
I, I, I mean, that's, I mean, that's what he has on here. I, I just want us to be in a place where we're doing the same thing consistently and that's kind of like impact fees. Do we go all the way there or do we just kind of roll up on it a little bit? And I feel like in this case, we need to roll up on it a little bit instead of going all the way to the other end. You don't know what the unintended kind of consequences are, but they won't be good for us.
Okay, Commissioner Dutton?
I think, I think that we're, we are setting the precedent now. I think across the street there is the Development Authority and they have their own, you know, rules. It's, it's a green industrial park. In fact, it's the only green industrial park in the southeastern United States. And it's been so successful that the people are coming to build out next door to it and they're asking to be restricted as per the Development Authority's green policies. Like, I would love if this property came in and said, we'd also love to be attached to, to the, the green requirements. They haven't and we, we're not gonna, we're not gonna spring on you tonight. And so, what we're creating here is a very different situation than what is across the street with the, with the green industrial park. This is also commercial and not industrial, so it's totally different.
It's the same thing.
Well, no, I, I don't, I don't think so. I, I?
No, commercial is, I mean, not commercial, retail, but it's not even really wholesale. This is?
Sure, sure. It's just, it's, this is kind of warehouse space. The, but the idea is, there's not, I think, I still think it's a different enough animal that we can set precedent with this one and then move forward going east on Arthur K. Bolton with, with the conditions that we're creating now. So, and it's, and it, it's easier, like you said, to, to go easier in the future, right? And, and make exceptions lower than this. It's harder to, to move up. It's harder to get someone to agree to get more buffers and more stuff. So, there, there isn't any kind of current building like this in this area, but it is exactly in line with the future land use map that has had the Arthur K. Bolton overlay designated for, you know, twenty years, you know what I mean? Like, this isn't something that is new. This isn't something that, I, may, maybe you were here on the board then, but the rest of us weren't. None of us decided that this was gonna be an industrial corridor. When the state came down and said, hey, we want to put this industrial corridor here in exchange for putting a gigantic four-lane with access roads and a median. So, that was the whole point of building Highway sixteen as it is with four lanes and a median, is to make it an industrial corridor. So, I, it shouldn't surprise anybody that now finally people are building stuff to go along the industrial corridor.
So, I just want to kind of ask you and Stephanie this at the same time. There have been times when, when people have come to us with a request or whatever and during the process, we have changed our ordinance, but it didn't reflect on the person who had already made the application. So, when you, when you say we're setting a precedent, I'm so uncomfortable with that because I think we should be setting a policy or an ordinance. And that should move us forward and, and it should not just talk about the buffers. It should talk about what happens if you're close to a residence. And, and we can't do that now.
Our hope is certainly that you would, but you have an applicant who is willing to, to make these concessions now at, at a fifty, seventy-five. So, the applicant has been willing to go along with these all, all along.
Well, I guess that, I, I think we just need a fifty, seventy-five and not, not, then we come up with a number. And when we have it on paper, then we can say to each individual that comes in here, this is what our requirements are. If you're next to a house or a residence, you have to have da-da-da-da-da. But I just think it's unfair for us to do this with this applicant. And we haven't even decided what else we're gonna do about this. I mean, this is not just about this one thing. It's about how do we allow the communities that are adjacent to Arthur K. Bolton, because it's gonna develop. But I mean, I live on High Falls Road in Spalding Street and everything on the backside of the industrial park is on that street. So, people are gonna be affected every single time someone comes in. What we need to do is figure out how we will create the ordinance that will protect them in a way that we're trying to, to do now, which we don't really have the authority to do because we're going against our own ordinance. That's why I said I, I don't feel comfortable with us taking the longest buffer. We can go there at some point, but I think we should, you know?
There's, there's?
Go with our agreement.
There's currently a law against parking just on the shoulder of sixteen, right? Can we, can we put in here as well this, a staff recommendation about no parking on, along Tamachi-Chi and Chi-Haw? Just to make sure that, I know folks brought that up tonight.
Do they do that in industrial parks?
Like, I, I know the, the warehouse park in Henry that has like the access road where the warehouses come off of, like, there's semis parked all alongside of it, you know?
That's a good point.
You know what I mean?
That's a good point.
And we don't want them to like just park alongside.
Yeah, pulling up there and waiting.
Yeah.
Because if they're given times, a lot of times the places are given times, driver, you can come in here between four and five. They get there at three, they get there at one, and they just pull off to the side and just park and rest.
So, another ordinance, no parking, no parking on, no parking on this road, no parking on the road.
Tamachi-Chi or Chi-Haw.
Yeah, no parking on Chi-Haw or Tamachi-Chi. And not just for this, for anybody else that comes.
Yeah, yeah, just no parking.
If you're adjacent to a resident, you should not be able to park on the road.
As I remember, this was?
Well, maybe, I'm asking Stephanie, should we say that?
I'd like to add a condition to add, no parking on Chi-Haw or Tamachi-Chi.
I mean, you can certainly add it and your ordinance does not allow for through trucks on Tamachi-Chi and Chi-Haw already.
In the first place, there should not be any trucks coming up there.
That's a, that's a good point.
But I mean, this, it's the same with like the light and the sound ordinance stuff. Like, we've got a condition in here that just says they have to comply with the current rules, you know what I mean?
I, I don't, I don't have any problems with adding it and saying, hey?
No parking on those two streets.
No, no trucks.
No truck parking.
The applicants, we, we can certainly add that. The applicant's number seventeen, though, is about allowing us to install and operate traffic cameras. That is not something that, that staff advises you to.
Which one was that?
The applicant's number seventeen.
With the red writing on it?
The developer shall permit the county to install, own, and operate a traffic camera on the subject property facing Chi-Haw Road to ensure compliance.
Yeah, we're just gonna put a sign up to say no, no parking, no through trucks.
And, and given that there's no, there won't be any access, there's, there's no reason to have a traffic camera there that would require code enforcement, actually would require the sheriff to, to ticket people.
I have three different copies of ordinances.
Okay, are we at the? Are we look about ready for motion? Anybody got any others?
I think we're still expressing our opinions. I think, James, you're, you're missed.
I mean, that's what, has everybody expressed their opinion?
So, so we, let's, I think we're all, I'm gonna put a pin in the buffers and come back. I think having an emergency access for, you know, life-saving type emergency stuff that the owner of the property can't access, that can only, you know, can only happen on a single lane, this is not an entrance or exit. I, I think that's a good idea as long as it doesn't line up with anyone's driveway, you know, it doesn't go straight into somebody's house. The idea of what the buffer should look like as like in twelve, I think I've, I've gotten what I want there. You know, it's, this is a double row of evergreens of, of different types, but, you know, specifically, like in C, double evergreen, be planted and maintained so that as to significantly reduce the visibility of property improvements from all sides. So, like, hey, this is being built in conjunction with an arborist and, or planted in conjunction with an arborist and like, there's no, there's not, the intention has to be to block the sightline, not like, haha, I've checked the box and, you know, like, no, and there's no cute way out of it.
There's no question as to the purpose.
The purpose of this is to block the sightlines.
And noise.
And, yeah, and noise and light and everything else. I, I think that we've got everything else in here. The only real question left in my mind is, is that buffer stuff. What we've got here is, or what they're proposing is two different, really three different buffer distances, a fifty, seventy-five along the properties contiguous, okay? Which would mean not separated by road. So, that is to say the residential and the property to the south, right? Those are the only two that aren't separated by road, right? But then it says, except for the one, including, but not limited to parcel, whatever, the, the, the house that only goes to ten-foot and a forty-foot planted buffer. So, really, that fifty-foot buffer and seventy-five buffer really only goes for the property that's the woods south of them.
No, Commissioner, what we've got in one is that that entire buffer is a fifty, seventy-five, so fifty-foot minimum, seventy-five average. And then at a minimum, the fifty-foot has to be ten-foot undisturbed and forty-foot planted. So, when you go up to averaging, then you have ten-foot minimum undisturbed, forty-foot planted. So, the seventy-five, you could add, you know, more on the planted side, more on the undisturbed side. But at a minimum, the buffer has to be that ten and forty.
I see. So, it's, it's the seventy, fifty, seventy-five for the residential house.
Correct.
And then the frontages along Tamachi-Chi and Chi-Haw are twenty-five, fifty, that's what you're asking for. And now, of course, we've asked, in our staff report, we've asked for a fifteen, sixty, right? No.
And they just offered fifty, seventy-five for, for all three sides, not just, not, not a difference. Based on road frontage property.
So, what we're saying is we would, instead of going seventy-five, a hundred along the residential area and then, and then this lesser than, a lot lesser than that along Tamachi-Chi and Chi-Haw, to go with fifty, seventy-five the whole way around. So, we actually get denser buffers on Chi-Haw and Tamachi-Chi, right?
Correct. On Tamachi-Chi and Chi-Haw, you'd be going from a twenty-five minimum to a fifty-foot minimum and from a fifty average to a seventy-five average. And that would make the same condition all the way around. Another way to phrase it is you're taking staff's recommended condition number one and making those numbers fifty, seventy-five.
And that, that kind of takes care, if the applicants?
Yeah.
If the applicant suggests that, that forces, it doesn't get us into forcing him to do, or the applicant to do that.
With the larger minimum fifteen-foot undisturbed buffer and larger sixty-foot planted buffer, right? No, because that would mean, that would mean a seventy-five foot minimum.
That would be the?
Not a fifty-foot minimum.
Yeah, those, those, those numbers would have to be decreased as well.
There's just certain places on that property where you cannot get seventy-five feet. And around the house, they're doing the, the wall burned and the, the buffer. Planet buffer, which would be the burn. And then ten feet of undisturbed next to the house, Mr. Doubley, the Doubley family house. And then that adds actually fifty to seventy-five everywhere else that they can do it on, on Chi-Haw and on Tamachi-Chi, right? I, I think that's good.
Okay, now?
I'm taking fate of the party on the buffers.
You're what?
I'm, I'm good with what y'all think on the buffers, please.
Okay. Are we, are we pretty well ready for motion?
Just as long as we know that we, the thing, the change is everything that we said, what was in and what was out.
May I?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, now, is this getting ready to be pre-motion? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve. Come back down here.
Just, I think Stephanie will read it.
Yes, she will read.
Say it and then?
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Condition number one, there shall be a fifty-foot buffer and a seventy-five-foot average buffer along all road frontages and property contiguous with the subject property in Zoned AR-1, which buffer at a minimum shall consist of a ten-foot undisturbed buffer and a forty-foot planted buffer. Any curb cut from, number, sorry, number two, any curb cut from Highway sixteen will require G dot approval and shall follow G dot recommendations on the A cell and D cell lanes. Number three, parking shall provide landscape islands in the regular car parking and landscaping along the front of the building. Number four, all lighting shall be night sky compliant and provide for the least impact on adjacent properties. Five, all parking that is at or above the grade of adjacent roadways shall be oriented to the internal operations of the site. Six, natural vegetation shall be preserved within a majority of the wooded reserve portion of the southwest corner of the development labeled potential septic area on the concept plan dated nine nineteen twenty-two, provided that if and as permitted by the Spalding County Health Department, Georgia Environmental Protection Division, and any other regulatory agency as required. Seven, all solid waste disposal mechanisms must be internally oriented and shall be enclosed. Eight, all signage must be approved separately pursuant to the Spalding County Sign Ordinance codified in Appendix E of the zoning ordinance of Spalding County, Georgia. Nine, no entrance to the development shall be permitted on Tamachi-Chi Road to the north of the development. And ten, the emergency access to the subject property on Chi-Haw Road shall only be used for emergency access and the access shall be controlled by, controlled with a Knox box or similar device which restricts use of the gate to only emergency service personnel. That should be personnel, not personal. Number eleven actually goes away if you approve the auxiliary access on, for the Knox box at number ten because that currently staff recommendation is that if the auxiliary access on Chi-Haw is not approved?
Emergency, right?
Right, but, but if you let me?
I'm with you.
If, is not approved, the developer shall reduce the square footage by a hundred thousand square feet to a total of nine hundred thousand square feet. But if you're approving the emergency access on Chi-Haw, that one goes away regardless, based on the language of the, the condition. Number twelve, all buffers shall consist of, A, a staggered double row of evergreen trees consisting of no more than thirty-three point thirty-three percent of the same species; B, in areas where the internal parking facilities are at or above the grade of the adjacent roadway, a planted berm must exist to improve sound reduction; C, said staggered row, staggered double row of evergreen trees shall be? trees shall be planted and maintained so as to significantly reduce the visibility of property improvements from all sides. Number 13, the developer shall be required to have a maintenance bond on all landscaping and buffers to be reviewed by a certified arborist for a minimum of three years after issuance of a land disturbance permit for the development. 14, all noise, all noise associated with parking, loading, and unloading of trucks shall be conducted at a level and during the hours that comply with the Spalding County noise ordinance. 15, at the time of land disturbance permitting, the developer shall establish that there is adequate parking space, flow, and transport for the intended use of the development. 16, the emergency access point to the subject property on Chiha Road shall not line up with any existing residential driveway and shall be a single lane wide enough to accommodate emergency vehicles. Number 17, a landscape plan to include the type of trees and the size of trees to be planted shall be presented to staff for approval pursuant to condition number one. And number 18, no parking shall be allowed on Tamachichi or Chiha Roads.
Truck parking, yes.
Just any parking?
No parking.
Yeah, okay. Is that your motion?
That is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that. All right, do I have a second?
To approve with those conditions?
To approve, my motion is to make the approval with the conditions, the 18 conditions, 17 conditions.
18, it is 18.
She added 18, no parking.
Okay, what about taking out 11, does that change it?
Oh, yes it does, yes ma'am. It is 17, you're right.
17 conditions.
Sorry, I can't count.
Total conditions numbered weirdly.
Okay, I have a mo, I have a motion.
So we got that clear, right? We got that clear?
Okay. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? During this discussion part, Attorney Newton Galloway, any comments?
Mr. Chairman, you need to remember that I'm conflicted out.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I forget about that.
And I appreciate Ms. Wyndham picking up the word.
All right, all those in, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Close the chairs. Thank you all for coming that are pertaining to just Tamachichi. We're now moving on to the next one.
Could I recommend that you take a break? You've been going two and a half hours.
Yes.
All right, five-minute break.
Oh, thank goodness.
Get that, change that doggone buffer ordinance, or get us whatever it is that doesn't build in here.
So we don't have...
So we, we want to create our own, like, what's his condition?
Take that and done that.
He sent that hurt.
Yeah. Let us, let us adopt what they have, and we can get that.
To get everybody back on the agenda, we're item seven, number one, we have finished, we are now starting on number two. Lift from the table and conduct a public hearing on application 22-11Z, 585 Spalding Investment LLC owners, South, 35 South McDonough Road, approximately 208.99, located in Land Lot 14 of the Third Land District. The applicant requests rezoning from AR1, Agriculture and Residential, to C2, which is manufacturing, to allow for a building in operation of a warehouse.
Motion to lift from the table.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zeros. Ms. Morales.
Yes, sir, good afternoon, good evening again, Commission. So they are coming before us...
Can you all hear her, back in the back?
Can y'all hear me?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Use your outdoors voice.
So they're coming before us to rezone their property from, again, AR1, Agriculture Residential, to C2, which is manufacturing. They're right next to the industrial parkway, just to give you guys a little background on that. They were approved or were given a conditional approval, recommendation of conditional approval by the Planning Commission. The applicant is here to speak. They have also met all the requirements for AKB, which is the Arctic Boltin overlay. And here, you have any other further questions? Oh, the DRI has not come back to us just yet. I spoke with Three Rivers this afternoon, and they stated that they have it set to come back tomorrow, so a day after the meeting takes place. So one of the conditions states completion and analysis of DRI application by Three Rivers Regional Commission to be completed, and that will not be completed until tomorrow.
Does that have any impact on what we're doing?
The report tells us...
It's, it's not the best way for this to be done. However, the DRI should have been, the DRI, had it been tendered by prior staff, should have been, excuse me, should have been here months ago. The lack of the DRI being tendered to Three Rivers became clear as we were looking at the, preparing the staff report for the Planning Commission.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder, both number two and number three are public hearings, so you need to open a public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to open up the public hearing for application 22-11Z.
Do we need to, do we need to lift from the table number three first, so we can go into public hearing for that at the same time?
For both.
Let's do them one at a time.
Yeah, you can just close public hearing.
Okay, one at a time. All right, I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All right, this time we're in mo, public hearing?
If, if you will look on the staff report on page two, you will see that we referenced the regulations governing the Development of Regional Impact Report. This project required DRI review because it includes 1.325 million square feet, and you can see DCA Rule 110-12-3.051A2. It must be, or, I'm sorry, not 1A2, 110-12-3.034, the application must proceed, but it cannot be finally approved by Spalding County until such time as the DRI report is complete and sufficient time has been allowed for its consideration.
What Mr. Galloway is saying is that you can make it condition, conditional, it is certainly not ideal, but if you wanted to proceed tonight, you could.
This is just, we're doing public hearing right now, right? So anybody from the public...
You can still have a public hearing, yes, sir.
You can still conduct your public hearing.
Okay.
Well, we went into public hearing, but if people come, if we end up tabling this, I, I would recommend that we do another public hearing if we're gonna bring it back up, so that if there's people that come and they go, wait a minute, you had one last time? I just...
You can have as many public hearings as you want.
That's correct, you can have as many as you choose. However, Commissioner, I would, I would recommend a little differently.
Okay.
If there is no negative information in the DRI, I do not see the need for an additional public hearing because there's nothing in the DRI that would ultimately impact your decision.
Well, short of the public coming in...
Public comment, what I'm saying is, public comment can be taken tonight, you can do what you want to do, but we do not expect any negative information from the DRI. Eva has been in touch with them and reviewed this with them, so with, with that, we just want to make certain that you are aware of the requirements, that the DRI must be in hand before you actually finally approve it.
Okay.
If it is approved.
Okay. Dr. Ledbetter?
Yes, there are, there are five people who have signed up this evening. Dina Robertson Ray, don't believe she's here.
She spoke earlier.
Do you want to hear from the applicants first?
Yeah. No, let's, let's get the public hearing first, then we'll talk, yes, thank you.
Jeff Grant.
Welcome back, Mr. Grant.
Yes, sir, Jeff Grant, 237 Crouch Road, try not to be so tongue-tied. Talked about this earlier, talked about all the traffic conditions, you know, the entrances coming on South McDonald Road, the future developments coming on South McDonald Road, why can't, you know, I know that's the best thing for the developer, why can't entrances come from the industrial park side? Plenty of frontage on the industrial park side, we just, all the people we've talked to in the area don't understand why it's all got to dump on South McDonald. We talked about the poor air quality, and those are facts, I mean, that comes with... I mean, that comes with things of this nature. Like I said, we're not opposed to the bigger building that's kind of centrally located on this property. We're talking about the building that's parallel to Wild Plum Road. It's three hundred and ten by eleven hundred and seventy-six foot or something like that. That tells me that is a truck in and out, in unload, truck in load, trucks in and out all night, all day long, which anybody that works around these kind of things knows that trucks sit out on for hours at a time. I work at a place, truck drivers sit out in the truck, sleep, the truck is running to run air conditioning or heat. And you walk into work in the morning, you got exhaust fumes throughout the parking space, the parking area. And these exhaust fumes stay at lower levels, that air that we breathe. All kinds of reports that this is, you know, hazardous to your health. The other thing we have is noise levels. Y'all talk about buffers. This one, I think it's a hundred-foot buffer. Hundred-foot buffer is only five car lengths. And I don't know how you plan to hide this building in a hundred-foot buffer. It's the noise levels. You know, if you're around this type of warehouse, been around this type of warehouse, worked in it, whatever, you know there is truck backup alarms, there's forklift noises, there's PA systems, intercoms, just a wide array, you know, trucks backing up, banging into trailers, and all these things going on while these trucks are loading, unloading forklifts. And I think that's just going to be, you know, something that the neighbors are going to have to be put up, have to put up with, and we never have had to do it before, because I've always been on quite peaceful country living. And then you have the marshlands to consider, the creeks, you know, streams, pollution from runoff, residual oil, fuel, fumes running to creeks, marshland. Understand, they have these retention ponds, you know, and it's got to be a pretty dang elaborate retention pond to keep these oils and surface that float on water out of creeks and streams. And we're just asking, you know, as residents of the area, of this community, to not approve that one building. They already approved for the other one, but they brought this one in later on and dropped it in the middle of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
I think so. Tommy Bowden, Bowden?
Tommy Bowden, six-six-five South McDonough Road. I oppose the construction of either building, actually. I've spoke with the gentleman a couple months ago, and he said that the reason they can't do access out of the industrial park that that's what it's for is due to marshland. Well, like I told in the planning zoning meeting, and I'll tell it again, if Clayton County, Georgia, can build a fire station, and Southern Regional Medical Center can build a parking lot and force the water out of the marsh, they can do the same thing for a driveway to carry the trucks in and out of the industrial park that you all designed for the tractor-trailers. South McDonough Road is not capable of handling tractor-trailers. Your ordinance itself says no tractor-trailers. There are no truck signs up and down South McDonough Road from one end to the other. Yes, we still have them at late at night, early in the mornings, but you're actually inviting more traffic that's going to be not only dangerous to the citizens in that area, but you got Rehoboth Road Middle School, school buses up and down that road all hours of the day, particularly early in the morning. I'm out on my front porch at six, between six, six-thirty in the morning, and I can tell you now at that time of the morning, there are school buses running. You let one of them truck drivers come out at the bottom of that hill, as the school bus is topping that hill, we got a disaster. Kids, we're talking about middle-aged kids that are now injured or dead. They can put this driveways in the industrial area where they belong. It's going to cost them a little money, but there's no telling what they're going to be making off of these two buildings. So which is more important? A few millage rates gathered on the taxes off of these buildings, or the children's lives? It's your choice. You were elected to keep us safe. Am I right? Keep us safe. Do not allow them to put these driveways on South McDonough Road from either side.
Thank you, sir.
Jeff Harmon? Ready for the applicant?
Is there anyone else?
There was no one else to speak.
Oh, sure.
All right, yes. Applicant?
Wait a minute, Mr. Jarvis, hold on.
Can anyone...
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. That sheet was pulled early, and I didn't get to sign up on that one.
Name and address.
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry. Richard Crowley, sixty-four North Walkers Mill Road. Again, I'd like to finish up where I ended up stopping earlier today. I really feel like y'all really need to take a step back and look at your infrastructure throughout the whole county. Existing roads, the existing bridges, get them up to grade. I'm here also to talk about the tractor-trailer trucks. You know, you can put that sign up there that says, "No parking, no truck-through trucks." You can see the "No Parking" signs on the ramp of I-75, and they park there right beside them. They can't read, I guess. But you're talking about no tractor-trailer trucks. Timman Road's another one. They're not coming through Griffin down one-fifty-five anymore. They're turning right and taking Timman Road over to nineteen forty-one. You're not enforcing it. And, you know, now you're going to be bringing more trucks, more traffic, and I'm going back to the level of service for the traffic studies at South McDonough Road, Walkers Mill Road. They're D's. F, level of service, F and D are not acceptable. You're supposed to have a C or better. If y'all don't understand that, I can try to tell you later. But y'all are, y'all need to come up. Jenkinsburg Road, y'all approved a development over there that backs up to the one in Butts County. That bridge has been out there for almost a year now, and nothing's been done about that. I think y'all need to get together with Butts County and put that bridge back in. Or are you waiting to let the development take it over? I think y'all really need to be more prepared than you are. I'm sorry, but that's the way it is.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley.
David Lynch, one-eight-five North Walkers Mill Road. It's been a lot of water across the dam tonight. Verbiage for both sides, a lot of very concerned, very heartfelt things spoken about. I just still do believe, one you voted on already, too big a box for small tract of land. Same thing on this one, on South McDonough Road. Maybe not quite as bad as the Timman Road issue, but still, with all the traffic concern, all the life safety issues of the roadways and the heavy truck traffic, I'm in McDonough every day, all by Henry County. I think the one-fifty-five traffic issue to get to the interstate, we all know that road. I've driven it for thirty years. It'll be mild compared to once you get several warehouses on sixteen out here, the million-square-foot warehouses. Whole brother of the trucks they have. Oh, yeah. One of you earlier spoke about some have already been approved with lesser stipulations, and now there was being considered about the Timman Road. I think maybe this opportunity, looking forward, that some language from the commission could be that, really, and we need to put under the microscope and see if we do need to strengthen some of our requirements for these developers, so that we somehow don't have as bad as could be. I'm sorry, but I request a vote no against this proposal and the next one coming up on Timman Road. I don't think that's the best design that could be. Thank you.
Thank you, David. The applicant, Mr. Harmon?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Harmon. Address is fourteen-hundred Beaufort Highway, Sugar Hill, Georgia. I'm the applicant for the property. This is part of a four-hundred acre piece that a little over a year ago, we got, we received zoning on, three-quarters of it. This is the whole property. This is the piece that's already zoned. The industrial park is Green Valley's end the other side, so we're coming in for the balance of it, so we can put all the property together, develop the right amount of lift stations and everything else, and figure out the whole piece as one project. This property was in the future land use plan as industrial for a very long time, was always meant to be industrial. We're in the Arthur Bolton Parkway overlay, and so we're bound by several development things, and obviously, there's a lot of money invested in this. As far as a lot of concerns about the looks of the buildings and everything else that is in the Arthur Bolton, so we're going to have to do nice buildings, our intent, since we have that whole area, to do a very nice project. A couple of issues that we have is, one of the conditions was a road that everyone's been talking about on South McDonough. And we've agreed to improve it. And the one good thing about the access to this is, you have Arthur Bolton Parkway, a traffic light, and South McDonough Road, and there's nothing there except our property for industrial. And there's no reason for anyone leaving the industrial park to keep going down, so we've agreed to put, you know, some signs up as you leave saying, you know, access, you know, truck access through Arthur Bolton Parkway only. And really, it wouldn't make sense for them to go the other way. I mean, they're going to access Arthur Bolton Parkway and go back to seventy-five, and they're not past anything at that point, so we basically have everything there. One of the conditions, we just like to clarify a little bit, we're willing to basically overlay the whole road, all the way, I hope, can I scover to point this? Yeah. On the plan, they are showing access down here, but it really doesn't make sense to access because it does go uphill and everything. This was a, you know, a land plan, there is, and even when we would talk to the planning commission, I told them that we'd definitely work with Spalding, with, you know, Spalding County and DOT and everything else to figure out where our access points are, whether that's here, or here, or across this creek and everything else. We have no problem crossing the creek and everyone else. We just have to figure out where all our ingress egress points are. And we agree that from the traffic light down to wherever our last access point is to the properties, that we will put, you know, a three-lane road. There's already a two-lane road, so we'll expand that on each side. And then to put that, in addition to that, though, whatever the remaining road is, we'll go ahead and top that. And so, you know, that'll be all cleaned up and everything else, too. Because we want a nice looking area in this. Thank you. You're welcome. And I think that's really all I have. There was a couple clarifications as far as, one of the conditions was, our intent is to, and we've worked with David Lucky, and we're working with him, and it's to be very similar to, you know, the Green Valley, but we can't go by all their guidelines and everything else. And we're going to, we have our own guy. And when I'm saying that, there's a lot of, they go by, and there's either fifteen or twenty guidelines David gives to potential clients, and they try and get half of them or a certain amount of them, and he works with them, you work your way through all that. So, you know, when it comes to the buildings and everything else, we plan on doing as much as we can, you know, to be the green thing. One of the guidelines, we've been working with the attorney and everything else to try and change that a little bit. But it's like when we did the first time, it's, you know, our intent is to be similar. We're still guided by the Arthur Bolton Parkway, we're guided by the market, and we're, you know, we're guided by what David did to become successful, too. But we're not really part of the Green Valley, and so it's hard to be, you know, encompass all that. So I just ask to work with you on that a little bit. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
I have a question.
Yes, yes.
So what you're here for?
We've got a closed public hearing.
Oh.
Closed public hearing. Motion to close public hearing. There's nobody else on the thing.
Correct.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Motion, public hearing is closed. All right, Commissioner Flowers-Taylor?
Okay, so what I'm trying to figure out, Mr. Harmon, is on, I see that you said on McDonough Road that you guys would resurface that road. You probably don't know that the plan is, I don't know, five years, seven years, ten years, that McDonough Road will become one-fifty-five, down to north, is that North McDonough Road right there? North McDonough is going to be one-fifty-five. So I'm just telling you, that's what's in the Georgia, Griffin, Spalding era transportation in DOT.
And GDA.
So, but what I do, I think the concern for me, and as for many of the citizens, is that there are a lot of driveway cuts. And I would love to see you be able to allow access. I see you have one possible access point off of the Lakes Parkway, but, I mean, you're in the industrial park. I do have a problem with an access being on Walkers Mill Road because I think...
Huh?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the little boxes. All right. So that's, right, and this is Walkers Mill, and there's a proposal. I mean, I know you say you haven't come up with anything yet. That is my only concern.
Okay, so there is a condition in the previous zoning that trucks cannot access Walker Road.
Okay.
That's just for cars. We agreed to that, so, and you can't, obviously, you can't take everyone in the industrial park.
Yeah.
You know, because you already got someone in the industrial park. So we can't access Arthur Bolton Parkway, and we can't access Wild Plum. You know, we said we weren't, we're not going to even, you know, go down there or anything else.
So are you, are you allowed, are you allowed to use the... So are you, are you allowed, are you allowed to use the, the Lakes Parkway entry into that, which is on your backside? Okay, that's, that's the only thing, and you cleared that up for me because you, you haven't done, really done the site plan yet, so you don't really know.
Exactly.
Where the driveway is. So this is just a rezoning request for the other part of your property, correct? Okay, that's all I have.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not approving the site plan tonight. This is sort of like, hey, here's our.
Zoning.
Thought of, this is kind of what we're thinking, but we're, we're not approving the site plan tonight, so we don't know where curb cuts are gonna go, we don't know. But we are locking in such conditions as no access on Wild Plum, no access on South Walkers Mill. And this, this does allow you to go through the Lakes of Green Valley, although Site F there in that, in the top.
Left.
Corner, the, the northwest corner there, that's, that's Site F for the industrial, at the Lakes of Green Valley. So you would come out right below that. And then in fact, that little corner in the southwest, that's actually not part of this land either, right? That's part of the industrial park.
Right.
Like the Lakes of Green Valley, right?
Ms. Kathy, can you pull up the staff conditions, please?
Hold on, hold on, let him.
Go back, go back one little second, so he can point.
Right, that little.
Over, more to the left.
Yeah, right there, in that little.
Where's the end of your property on the left side?
Yeah. Okay.
Is that part, gonna be part of your development too?
Yeah, well.
It's an easement and everything, we don't expect it. It is.
Yeah, there's like a, there's like a gas line going through and stuff, right?
Yeah, we, we don't expect it.
Okay.
All right, so this is a zoning action.
I'm just asking, I don't know, and this may, something I think would be in goodwill to do, should we ask maybe for the support of our, of David Lucky, maybe if he signs off?
Well, I've spoken to him about it.
You have already?
Yeah.
Yeah, and so has staff.
Yeah. Okay.
There were two conditions we'd like to change.
We need to go over the conditions.
Okay.
All right, so the first condition, Condition A, completion and analysis of DRI application by Three Rivers Regional Commission. B, rezoning conditioned upon the rezoning plan, 585 Spalding Investment LLC dated October 10th, 2022.
What's that?
So.
It's part of the application, Kathy, can you pull that up?
It's part of the package.
Okay, I don't have that.
It was added to Granicus.
Okay, that's a different.
So something's different from the five conditions that we have up here to recommend.
No, we want to make certain that we are, we are in agreement with the developer on the conditions before you make a decision.
It'll take you just a minute to bring up Granicus. Mr. Galloway, if you want to move on.
I've got it, I've got it. I've got it.
That's, that's the staff report, they're looking for the application.
I want you to see the site plan to which the rezoning is conditioned.
E to, E references D. The staff recommendation, E represent.
All right, Eva, can you see the? No.
Jeff, is that the same one that you have on your board?
This is different. That's a whole D R I.
That's correct. Correct. That's correct.
Okay, it's back on my screen. Scroll down a little bit. Scroll a little bit more. Scroll it down.
Keep going.
Keep going. You went to, no, keep going, sorry. Tom and Chichi case.
This is still on Tom and Chichi, you gotta get down to.
Yeah, keep going.
Keep going. Still Tom and Chichi. Way on down, you're in. This is the Tom and Chichi conditions.
That's still Tom and Chichi.
Okay, go down to.
What is it that we're looking for there?
The site plan, so you can see what we've conditioned it on.
Now you're too far down. You see? Yeah, that's gonna be it.
So at 109 is the map that has the numbers with the driveway cut. Slide 109, are you, we close to that?
Close. We should be, we're getting there.
Yeah, she's at 98. Keep going.
Keep going.
Keep going down.
Oh, okay.
Site plan, 127 of 342 or 128? There we go.
There we go.
This is the. This is full site plan that he just showed you.
Scroll down.
You're gonna have to keep going. We're passing, we're passing the paper.
We're passing the paper version of the part.
Page 267.
Page 267.
Okay, I saw that one.
That's for the new site, the site that needs the rezoning.
That's correct. And I want to make certain that they've seen that and that's consistent with the condition that's there.
And so what, what does the condition say again?
Rezoning conditioned upon the zoning plan, 585 Spalding Investment LLC dated October 10th, 2022.
So that's a fancy way to say like substantial compliance with what they've.
That's correct.
Designed here.
That's correct.
What I, the only condition that I have a concern about is E.
Okay, well, let's, let's walk through C first and pass that around.
Did the vote?
This is the one that they've requested the change, change in relating to the Spalding County IDA requirements. And we have agreed to the following text. The buildings shall be constructed similarly to the development standards utilized by the Griffins-Balden County Industrial Development Authority that govern development of the lakes in Green Valley.
Yep.
There you go.
There you go, that's it.
There you go.
Yeah, I mean, that's the one that we've been championing like, this is, this is why it's such a cool thing, is like.
That's correct.
Well, I think what it said is that you shall comply, as if we're ordering them to follow the exact stuff that they're doing, which they're not. I mean, they're volunteering to do a level of that, but yeah, I think that language definitely.
That's it.
You've got the correct plat in front of you now.
Okay.
Site plan. All right, go on with D.
Hold on, go back, go back to conditions.
It follows this line up and then falls off this line over here. It's not this or anything.
Right, right, right.
All right, Condition D, no ingress and egress shall be permitted to the property directly from AKB or Wild Plum Road. The property must.
Kathy, can we go back to the conditions on the screen? Sorry.
Sure.
I think it was just a, I think you can alt-tab over to it.
There we go. All right. We're good?
Okay.
All right.
All right, so let's, let's go back to C.
So. Let's go back to C.
Yeah, so the staff recommendation.
The building, the buildings shall be constructed similarly to the development standards utilized by the Griffins-Balden County Industrial Development Authority that govern development in the lakes of Green Valley.
Sorry, you're, you're reading something different than what it's in front of you then.
Yes.
Right, that was, that was, that's the revision they've requested on C.
Instead of you, instead of what we have on here that's E, that they shall comply, this says that they've changed it to sheet, they shall comply with.
The building shall be constructed similarly to the development standards utilized by, and then it's consistent.
All right, ready? D, no ingress, ingress or egress shall be permitted to the property directly from AKB or Wild Plum Road. The property must be assessed by South McDonough Road and the Lakes, Lakes Parkway. E, the 100-foot setback shown on zoning plan identified in Condition D above shall be either left as undisturbed buffer or planted buffer. And we have three additional conditions.
Hold on, so E says the 100-foot setback shown in the zoning plan identifying Condition D.
And that's, James, that is on the plat that you saw, that is the site plan.
So that, that should be as identified Condition B. So what I'm reading says the 100-foot setback, and E, the E that I'm reading says the 100-foot setback shown on the zoning plan identified in Condition D.
You're correct, that's correct. D should be B.
B, okay.
You're correct.
All right.
Condition number F, improve the paving on entire length of applicant's property from Highway 16 to southernmost area of their property to super paving to accommodate for heavy vehicle loads. G, increase the number of.
Hold on, can we stop it? Can we stop it? What does super paving mean?
It means it takes it to a, an aggregate that affords for heavier load traffic such as tractor trailers on that particular road.
Well, can we, instead of calling it super paving, can we say that specifically?
That's a technical term.
That is a technical term?
That's a technical term.
Okay, all right. Seems, seems a silly technical term, but okay.
While we're on that, and I talked to my paving contractor and everything else, so the road that's there, okay, using, if it was just, if we weren't gonna add a truck lane, we're just gonna redo that road, he says, and super paving is, he said it's a new DOT, even everything else. Well, we're, because this just came up, we'll find out about this part of it. And so what we're recommending on this is that we, and he said this, this fits the bill, but he said, if you were just, if you weren't adding anything to the road, just to improve the road on that, he said you would mill 100 feet at the beginning of the road and mill 100 feet at the end, and then go ahead and put an inch and a half of the asphalt on top of what you have already. And that will get you the traffic thing. Now, another way, when you build roads, and it depends on the base you have there and everything else, when you build roads, that's, that's a whole different ballgame too. It depends, you might already have that base. I think he said the super roads were like eight, two, two and one and a half or something like that, with the base and the mix and everything else. And so, we don't know what we have there, but there's no way we can go and rip up the roads and everything else. We can improve the road, you know, and we can get it to a higher standard, but we're also, we're also, wherever, wherever we, our last entrance on that road, once we figure out where that last entrance is gonna be on South McDonough.
On the south side, yeah.
Yeah, of what, how far we come down, you know, we'll go ahead and build a three, we'll put a truck turning, we'll put the, a turn lane in the middle, so you have that. But then after that point, you know, we just, we, we'll improve the road there. There shouldn't even be any trucks on it, but there's always trucks coming there and everything else. But we need to define a standard, and that's when I called up and asked them, you're asking me to, to basically improve a road, which we don't have a problem with, because it parallels our property, that we're gonna make up, we're gonna request all the trucks turn, you know, and head north when they leave, or, you know, depending what side they're on, they go to Arthur Bolton Parkway, and we'll have that extra lane there and we'll resurface that whole road too. And then we'll continue on down to the end of our property with just a two lane road. But as far as, you know, it's ambiguous to a point, but a super, you know, road is.
Yeah.
And, and that's, that's my issue, is I don't want there to be ambiguity. I want the requirements to be very spelled out so that nobody is surprised or upset later or there's any kind of conflict later. I want it to be very specific. If super paving is a ground up repaving and this, to this standard, then that's what it's gonna be. If we, if, if we want to agree on something less than that, then let's agree on something less than that. But let's not put super paving, and that means to us, this is an industrial term of art, which means X, Y, Z, and you're saying, hey, I can run an inch of asphalt over this, and that brings up a code. And, because I, that's clearly two different things, and we need to be on the same page as to what the condition is.
I, I agree. And I just found out what's super paving, super paving is ambiguous to a point. You know, it's stronger than, it's meant for trucks and everything else. But I, I did ask, and, and yeah, I can't, I can't answer that question.
Super paving is a technical term. Remember, this is, this portion of South McDonough Road is Phase 3 for the 155 bypass.
No, it's Phase 3.
It's Phase 3, that's correct.
So.
So it's gonna be a while before DOT actually puts the, puts that work into play. That being said, we do need to engineer, especially for the buildings in this area, so that there's enough room for the road to be extended to at least three lanes.
My question is, why, if we're just doing a zoning tonight, why are we putting all these specific requirements on? I mean, I think it's great that you, obviously you're gonna need super paving and you're gonna need three lanes, but it just kind of blurs for me this whole thing up, because all we're talking about is rezoning so you can provide us with a plan.
That, that is correct. It is just for rezoning. We just want to make sure that our developers understand that that is a part of what's coming to that area so that they can plan for it as we move past zoning into pre-plant.
But that says additional staff conditions, which means that we, we are already holding them to that, and we have, you know, and all they want to do is get the property rezoned.
Right, it's also in the DRI.
If, if.
That we don't have.
If developers are going to use state roads, then. If developers are going to use state roads, then like Arthur K. Bolton, then that's, that's the state's problem, and they're the ones who repair it. If developers are going to use ten foot of our roads, then that road needs to be brought up by that developer to a standard that, that truck's not going to crush it and destroy that road.
Oh, I don't, I don't disagree with you at all. I'm just saying, I just think that it's not appropriate to be discussing how the development is going to go without an official site plan or whatever study they do. All we're talking about now, are we going to give you permission to even rezone it to industrial?
Which is why I think maybe F should be changed to the southernmost, like curb cut, the southernmost entrance. They only have to develop what their trucks are going to use. So if they, if, go back to that site plan, if they run those up on kind of their own internal access roads, and there's just the one exit right at the end, right at Arthur K. Bolton, at the red light there, then they've only got to super pave that chunk of it. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, oh yeah, that's what we're saying too, and we don't know until we do that.
Which also incentivizes you guys to have as much, you know, so there's not as many curb cuts. But hey, if you want to have another curb cut, well, now you've got to do this whole.
Understandably, we feel the same way.
The, the, the one though that, that I'm, I'm going to fight you about is, is, is C. I really want it to stay as the staff condition here. We have been proudly touting that you guys came in and said, we want to be held to the same standards as the Development Authority, the, the green standards that are next door. Not just in the building designs, but like, that it's going to be an ex, a privately funded, instead of publicly funded, extension of our green industrial park. And we've, I mean, I, I, I brought it up to councils from other countries, you know, like, we've got, this is this really cool thing. We've even got private people coming in now, and they're embracing this, this green industrial park. And so I'm a little disheartened to hear you come in and go, well, we kind of want to change that. I absolutely do not want you to change that.
The only reason we really want to change it is because we don't really know what all the rules are of that park. And it's their ambiguous, but, I mean, this just, you know, came up to that point, and it's the same thing that happened the other one. Now, to.
Not exactly, Mr. Herman. This has been in there since before the planning commission.
Okay, well, then, because we went over this, I think, at the planning commission, I don't think it was the same, but let's say it was.
And y'all represented it as an extension of, of Green Valley.
Absolutely. We've been jumping up and down proud as Pontius Pilate about it, like, this is so great, these guys are coming in and they're going to hold to, and so it's a little.
So then we say, so what?
I feel it between my shoulder blades when you say that.
But there is no, you don't know everything that's required.
I don't, so it's, I mean.
We don't know everything that's required, so that is my point, is that this point in this process, it's really moot for us to be talking about what we want to require them to do when we don't even know what the terms are ourselves. So how are we going to have, hold him responsible to the terms of the Development Authority, which clearly they're not in a part of the industrial development complex, when we don't even know what they are? Ask me what one of them is.
That's why I was asking before, I mean, I see that they're listed on, on, on C, but has there been, you know, I mean, how, how involved are they in this, in this plan?
Again, we, we've spoken about it in the Development Authority meetings. I've spoken with David Lucky about it. They've spoken with David Lucky about it. Staff has spoken with David Lucky about it, the head of the Development Authority. And at, all of those conversations have been that these guys are going to use the same standards, green standards, not just in the buildings, and not just substantially, but they're going to use the same standards that the lakes Green Valley uses.
Can we get?
And like.
Can I go back one minute?
Sure.
We learned that prior staff had not complied with the requirements to bring this before you in AKB. So we did another pre-application meeting with them in order to comply with AKB. And Mr. Herman, I believe that we advised y'all to check the standards for Bolton, it's not for Bolton Parkway, but for the lakes at Green Valley, didn't we?
I wasn't, I don't know.
Okay.
And if you did, I didn't.
All right.
And we know, I mean, we met with David Lucky, and David, we've been dealing with him for years, and we understand, and we like it. I guess some of the things that scare me here is this, this, the development shall comply, and then, okay, we can comply with it and implement. Now you're saying we've got to actually.
Turn into the development.
We're just going to turn into a green, but I, we're going to be very similar. I have no, I mean, I want to be like that, but I don't, I don't know what all the rules, and I don't want to be bound by other people's rules if we look at that. And when we come into you, I guess with a site plan, then you're going to look at it, we're going to say, look, this is like the Green Valley, and then we can, if you say, well, I don't like this or that, we can go with it at that time. But you're asking me to incorporate all these rules right now.
No, 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 no.
But the condition does require the site plan, which if approved, would have to come back to the commission for, for revision. And Commissioner Flowers told it to address the question on the street or the road. It is standard in our policies to require ad zoning, because it's about the last time you get to catch it. Any road improvements which are defined under Georgia law as project improvements that are needed to serve that particular project. There's no difference with an axel or decel lane, it's the same thing.
And we do that for rezoning application?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I, I mean, I, I, I don't have a problem with that, the paving and all of that. I just think that it's put in the cart before the horse. But I would like to know what the twenty or the thirty things is that the, that is required for being part of the green development, industrial development park. And also, when we start talking about what the site plan looks like, that will have to come to us, right? So, so it's really not the last time you get to do anything with this. If we, if, you know, I get what you're saying about the road. I'm just simply saying, we're, we're, we're everywhere. I don't know if they're saying to him, you got to have, you know, air filters at every window that you got in the building. I don't know. And so, so, so my point being is that when you would come back to us with a site plan, we most assuredly will have some information that tells us what the development, industrial development standards are for the lakes at Green Valley. And then we can joust about what we want you to do or what you can do, and you can also tell us that. I mean, I think it's important, because we want to set a trend for any other developers coming to, if they don't completely adhere to everything in that development, we want the clean, green space, how, you know, air quality, and traffic. Those things are all, I'm sure some part of what those requirements are, but, um, yeah, I didn't realize that we did road stuff.
And to their, to their side, the development across the road, which was approved, does not have the condition to require compliance with Green Valley. But this was represented as an extension of Green Valley.
Yes. So, so if I write a contract and say, this contract is going to be governed by the rules, the laws of Delaware, because they're favorable to corporations. I, I, I don't get to later say, well, wait a minute, I didn't understand what the rules of Delaware were. I agreed, I came forward and said, we should do it by these rules, and, and I feel that's what's happening tonight. Like, I've even written on my paper, like, oh yeah, we should totally approve this one, and here's the reasons why. Because we, I had been jumping up and down, like, this is such a great, this is exactly what we want people to come in and do, attach themselves to these rules. And like, maybe, maybe we table it and let you guys circle around and, and see what those requirements are. And yet, and yet here we are with like, actually, right before we're going to change it, change what we said to zoning, we're going to change what we said to, and now we're at the very last minute, we're at the very last yes. Oh, actually, no, we, we don't want to do that, what we've been touting for months and months. And like, that, that's a level, uh.
Excuse me, one second, Mr. Dunn. I don't, I, I understand you completely, and I don't think we're changing, somehow there was some misunderstanding in how everything got translated and everything else, and this has been going on. We don't have a problem incorporating into the Green Valley. Okay, I want to make you happy, because it's, you're, you're there, and I don't want you, and the problem is, we, we talking to David and stuff like that, when someone comes in, a lot of it is a decision that David has to make.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
And so I don't want David to make my decision, I want to take his rules and be able to make my own decision. And that's why I'm saying I'd like to do it similarly to that. That's all I'm saying. I want it to be green. It helps us by doing green, because I think David's going to help bring us the, the clients for it and everything else, and I'm working with them.
We got people lined up out the door for it. But again, that's why you have to comply and you implement. When you said, I don't want to implement, wait a minute, well, now you're telling me I don't want somebody else to implement. We, we want you to implement those things. Again, those standards are a sliding scale on a stuff. Hey, we can, you can do this, but then you have, but then, and then you don't have to do this. Or you can do that, and you don't, there are some sliding scales. We, we don't want David Lucky to implement that. We want you guys to implement that. And, but according to the rules of the, the, the green industrial park next door, the Development Authority. Uh, so, like, I.
We'll go ahead and do it.
It's, it's a no for me without that.
Mr. Dunn, well, go ahead, you didn't have to say that.
We can table it.
No, I would rather, we, we'll do it.
Okay, I just, I mean, I was.
I just feel like we just beat you down.
Well, you know, but it's a very nice thing he's talking about. I just want to make sure I'm working, when you say that, okay, here, here's the question though, because we want to comply by, so I guess what we're saying is, with David Lucky, he has fifteen, twenty, twenty-five requirements. And then he picks whatever it is, and he picks, you have to hit a percentage of those requirements. All we want to do is take those requirements, so by saying we're going to implement it, we're going to take his requirements, what he's giving, and, and say, okay, we're going to use his same standards for doing this. But it's our decision to make, with the standards and stuff, as long as it fits in his box, right? We're going to say that, and then we got to, we're, we're going to implement those decisions.
But the, the level of compliance in all these various things lend to a level of, of greenness, like total greenness. You see what I'm saying? So you can't say, well, I get to now set all of these at low, and I'm still complying.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not asking.
Because now you're not in the, you see.
And Mr. Lucky doesn't actually pick those.
Right, right, right.
They're, they're, the, the.
They're, these are the options that the builders have, and you can, you hit, you know.
The industry is, the company is given, or the prospect is given the list, and they choose which of the ones that, that work for that particular industry.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
So here, here, for that, for this, these two, that piece of property which, that we're getting rezoned tonight, we'll go ahead and abide by all those rules.
Oh, good by me.
Which, which is basically, is what it says on there. Is that what that says?
And, and, and like, in, in complying with that, in having that, hey, abiding by these rules, like, that also affords you guys the opportunity for the, all the folks that are lining up out the door to get into our green park, to say, hey, we have a green park overflow right next door. You know.
I think that's going to be a great thing, I just want to make sure.
I really do as well, and so that's why I was like, oh no, they're backing out.
I'm not backing out, believe me. I just wanted to word it different, to just make sure, you know, it sounded like you got to.
That's what it says, that you have to do that.
We do, we're willing to do that. We, we've talked to David, like, we've brought in people that want to build some stuff, and we went through the process with them, so I know what he's doing. I don't know whatever, I know what his general operating is and, and kind of like using common sense, I'm good with all that stuff.
And there are some minimal stuff, like, some of the folks brought up, like, oil runoff and streams, like, you can't have any of that, like, zero. So, uh, you know, they can't even have their trucks idling as they load them, like, there's, they can't have any of that. Whereas your common warehouses, you'll have guys with their trucks on sleeping in them or whatever, like, these don't allow that to be green. But again, the, I, there's eleven Japanese companies, and Japan gives them like a huge tax incentive to open up.
There's a lot of that.
So they're not only going to get our tax incentives, but they're getting their home country's tax incentives to come here and open this, uh, you know, factory or whatever, because it meets these areas, so they want to do that.
And the state of Georgia also gives additional.
Yeah.
All right, so I have a motion to rezone with these.
Wait, wait, what about the, the road, what are we doing with the road?
Yeah, can we, can we change F to, to approve the paving on the entire length of the applicant's, uh, property to the southernmost road access?
I've got that text in here.
Right? Because I mean, that's, that's fair, it's not, not.
Improving, improved paving on South McDonough Road from the intersection of Arthur K. Bolton to the most, the southernmost entrance into the development. And that would be, and then pick up the super paving language.
Yeah, and now again, super paving is an industry term that you guys are going to comply with. I don't know what it means, but it's an industry term, and it means the trucks can drive on it, so whatever.
Do we have a motion?
No, not yet.
No, you don't have one.
No, not yet. All right, do I have a motion with, with what, uh?
You do it, because you browbeat him.
We, we've spoken back and forth for, for months on this, and I was all excited, and all of a sudden, tonight, it's like, oh, you're breaking my heart, what's happening?
Now, Commissioner said, do you have to remind you that we do not have a DRI back, so it would have to be a condition.
Yes.
And that's part of the conditional approval.
Yeah, to approve, to conditionally approve with staff conditions, the staff recommendations and the additional staff conditions, including the edit to F made tonight.
Let, let's do the same thing Ms. Wyndham did in the first one. The conditions would be A, unchanged, B, unchanged, C, unchanged, D, unchanged. E changed to make the parenthetical condition B as opposed to D. F, improve the paving on South McDonough Road from Arthur K. Bolton to the southernmost entrance into the development pursuant to super paving to accommodate heavy, heavier vehicular loads. G, no change.
Well, hang on, what?
That, that just means wherever, wherever there's going to be an ingress, like a curb cut, you guys have to put a turn lane into it.
Okay, that's what you mean by that?
Yes.
Okay, so just put a, a turn lane.
Yes.
And so again, if you run it up and there's just one, then you'd have a very small turn lane, because it's only going to go in and out. You wouldn't have to have one coming this way.
H is unchanged.
Oh, no, and, and can we talk about, what is the last one on there? The last one, we're just putting signs.
The signs to prevent them from going down.
Cars can still go.
Right, right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that comment says sign and prevent trucks, so I don't, what, you going to sign trucks?
Yeah, maybe we change that editorial. I think it should be signs to prevent trucks.
Signs to prevent trucks.
Thank you.
From turning south on South McDonough Road, all truck, all trucks shall egress to the north onto South Highway sixteen, AKB.
Yep. All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herman, appreciate it.
I think it's going to be a great project, guys.
Yes, we're excited about this.
We are, too.
Okay. Item number three, lift from the table and conduct a public hearing on application twenty-three dash zero three S Minerva Springs Lake LLP, owner two, two, three, three, six, T-Mon Road, approximately ninety-nine point two-one-four acres, located in land lot two, three, one, and two, three, two, in the third land district. The applicant is requesting a special exception to allow clustered dwellings, single-family detached house with open space with a traditional design within the R-two, single-family residence district. Do I have a motion to lift from the table?
I don't, I don't.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Four. All those opposed, one. We've lifted it from the table. Ms. Morales?
Open public hearing.
Public hearings. Motion to go in. Public hearing for, um, application twenty-three dash O three S.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. We're now in public hearing for, uh, application twenty-three dash zero three S. Dr. Ledbetter?
Public hearing for the public first. Ms. Michelle Drogas is up. Ms. Drogas, if you would please come forward and state your name and your address, please.
Michelle Drogas, three twelve Whispering Pines Way, Griffin, Georgia, Sunsetty Peach Street. This has been a long day. You guys have heard a lot of stuff, so I just want to remind you about a couple of things that I spoke about earlier, and I want you to envision Lexington Square on Hill Street. That little subdivision that is all two-story homes, all packed together like what this clustered dwelling is going to look like. And we're talking about the rural part of northeast Spalding County. We're talking about R-two development that is basically supposed to be low to medium density. This is a great place to, to raise families. We want to make sure that we stay consistent with it. We want to make sure that you guys are on task with what you've been intending to do, which is raise the bar for Spalding County. which is raise the bar for Spalding County. And again, if, if they remove the two acres for donating to the county for the fire station, the fourteen acres for the right-of-way, and over twenty-four acres required for open space, and there, that may not even take out the storm and whatever, I was figured it out to five, fifty-eight point six acres for two-hundred-and-ninety-five homes. I just want you to envision that. And with Sun City Peach Street being just down the street with over thirty-four hundred homes, I want you to think about the traffic that is going to be included in that, and that's why I existed there. I, I really think that you should do a, a traffic feasibility study before you can even move on this. And I really believe that you follow the current R-two zoning to preserve that quiet, relatively low to medium density neighborhoods. And I want you to remind you that this is just the beginning of all these new developments that are happening. Griffin is growing. We don't want to stop the growth. We want the growth to happen. We want developments to come in, but we want to do it right. We want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the people that are already living here and making a good future for the ones that want to be here. So again, I, I believe that you should oppose this and, or, or at least ask for a traffic feasibility study. And thank you for your time again.
Thank you. Nancy Wilifer? Maurice?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Okay. Lawrence Weeks?
My name is Lawrence Weeks, twenty-nine sixty-six Teeman Road. The property at twenty-three thirty-six Teeman Road, when purchased in two thousand and two, it was on R-two, that requires one acre minimum per home. They purchased it knowing that. Now they want to build four houses per acre. They also knew it, it's on a two-lane country road. The road is already dangerous. They are, at the time, adding hundreds of homes to Sun City Peach Street that will use Teeman Road for entrance and exit roads. There is only a few places to get over on the shoulder for emergencies. The clustered homes will have families with children there. There will be multiple cars per home. It will not be long before their homes will be rentals. I don't see a guarantee they won't be. The amount of land that was approved for this was ninety-nine point two-one-four acres. You take out the one-point-eight acres for the fire station, they got two open spaces, one twenty-four point six acres, other twenty-four point four acres, and then they got five-point-seven acres of roads in place. You take that, all that, you got forty-two point seven-four acres. Then you look, they have, hadn't have a scale or anything for their wetlands. There's a railroad easement and a cemetery of land, which I said before, they could be as little as thirty acres of land before they get through. Plus those houses, there's going to be thirty-four backed up between, about twenty foot from the line of Teeman Road. I think the commissioners should send this back to the zoning board. They should, they should have been more diligent when they looked at it to start off with. The property just not there for the homes they want to build. And also, the owner has not been diligent also with what he's presented to you. I appreciate your time, and God bless Spalding County.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks. Appreciate it.
Ms. Brenda Weeks? Mike Hubbard?
Mike Hubbard, uh, three-thirty-eight Yancey Road, Milner, Georgia. My wife and I own a property residence on twenty-six sixty-seven Teeman Road. Attending a meeting like this makes me glad I'm retired. I'll just say that. I've, I've been in long meetings before, and I'm, I'm used to it, but I just know how it goes. I wanted to remind some of the commissioners about, uh, some of the common themes in the comprehensive plan that you wrote or that you revised every five years. Quality development, uh, you know, I would ask, who is this quality development for? It's certainly not for the residents of Teeman Road. Strategic infrastructure development, that's another theme of the comprehensive plan. Strategic means planning ahead. Strategic means planning. The roads are not safe on Teeman Road right now. As people have mentioned, there's a thoroughfare from McDonough Road all the way to nineteen forty-one, four, uh, eighteen-wheel trucks and all kind of vehicles are going through there. It's not safe. Right now, it's not safe. Another theme you have is focused rural character preservation. This type of, uh, development is a rural character killer. It will destroy the rural community, because there'll be another one after this one. You can bet on it. Smart neighborhood design. I would, I would ask, what's, what's smart about putting so many people in such a small area? We, we've also talked about, uh, a lot of discussions about buffers tonight. You chose, the development calls for an entrance and exit, one entrance and exit, unless I'm wrong. I, I don't think there's but one. It's, it's not safe right there. What you're going to have, when we were talking about buffers earlier, you're going to have people's headlights shining on six residences that are in front of that entrance right there. Approving that, to me, shows some indifference for the people who live there, lack of concern for the people that live there. My question is, why is there not a exit on Smoke Road? This also is on a, a very dangerous curve. People on Teeman generally driving fifty-five and sixty miles per hour. They come around a curve. And here we have a, a big entrance, uh, like Sun City sitting there.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard.
Kay Wimpy? Mr. Bob Byer?
Thanks for waiting, Bob.
Good evening. My name is Bob Byer. I live at five-one-six Orchid Lights Court, and that's in Sun City. Sun City will be adjoining this development. Spalding County needs affordable housing. I know a lot of the developments that are going in are very nice, with big pieces of property and six, seven-hundred, eight-hundred thousand dollar homes. But all the warehouses you've seen here, and the industries at the lakes, need employees, and those employees need a place to live. Right now, they're having to go to Henry County, or Clayton County, or Fayette County. Let's get them to come in Spalding County and shop at our retail outlets and pay taxes, not only to the county, but to the school system as well. We've heard a lot of comments about the type of development this is going to be. It's very similar to what Sun City is. The lots and the house size are very similar. Probably half of the homes in Sun City are going to be smaller than what is planned for this development. I, this has been talked about for months and months, and I have talked on several occasions about it. We need the fire station land. Boy, that fire station right next to Sun City would be fabulous. We've heard talks about traffic. Yeah, there's going to probably be a little bit more traffic, but Teeman Road, if you write on it, it's not that bad a road. And, and the comp, transportation plan called for intersection improvement at Teeman and one-fifty-five. And if it gets bad at Taylor, at, at Hill Street and Teeman, just put a traffic light, put a circle in like you, like this county did, the city did, on Hill Street. Again, I urge you to give this positive consideration, because Spalding County needs affordable homes for families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byer.
Mr. Chairman, that's all who have signed up this evening for a public hearing.
It's up to you, man.
Yes, please come.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not dealing with that, because y'all didn't let Michelle Druaz speak twice, and, and it's not fair.
This is a different public hearing. She did speak twice tonight. It's a different.
No, I mean, when she had to speak again.
She, you only speak once at a public hearing, without a vote. This is a separate public hearing.
When somebody gave, was going to give their three minutes to her.
That was during public comment, I think, is the point, is his point.
Uh, that was citizen's comment? My bad.
No, 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 no. Go ahead.
I'll go ahead. I'm sorry to appear for a third time tonight. I'm Richard Crowley, sixty-four North Walkers Mill Road. And, um, you know, I've sat here just like y'all had. I know y'all are bored, too. But I'm going back to the part, y'all need to be prepared for all of this development. I don't think you are. What we just heard about super pave, not knowing what that is. Super pave is just a formula for that asphalt. What you need to do is make sure the whole entire roadway, the GAB, the base, all of that is going to support tractor-trailer truck. Now then, on to Teeman Road. You've got a sharp curve there. Somebody needs to look at it. Can't Mr. Upson look at that for the county to see if there's sight distance for that? Stop-in sight distance for those cars to pull in and out? If you go up the road to Henry County, right off of one-fifty-five to where Avalon is, you have those cluster homes. They look identical to the pictures you have on the screen. You can't drive down those streets without having to park behind a car that is parked to let the other car come around. That, that doesn't need to be allowed to happen. And the cul-de-sac and the variances, how much can you cram in ninety-nine acres? You can't reduce it. I think y'all need to think about it. I think y'all need to talk with your county engineer, your roadway engineer. And again, Spalding County roads are falling apart. The road I live on, it was paved the first time in nineteen, mid-seventies. It's never been paved since. Y'all need to look at this. I wish y'all would.
Thank you, Mr. Morales.
Get out and take a trip.
Bethany Randolph?
Bethany Randolph, three-thirty-nine Sheehaw Road. I grew up at the beginning of Teeman Road on, in Sunnyside. My mother still lives there. I visit there very often. I traveled that length of road to one-fifty-five, going back and forth home. Can tell you, I, I am one of them that runs fifty-five and sixty up and down Teeman Road and meet plenty of tractor-trailers and dump trucks, whether they be going to the construction entrance of Sun City or the cut-through to make that dogleg turn up there in Sunnyside. That area right there cannot handle any more traffic. The school can't handle it. The county can't handle it. And I think my biggest point in all of this to say, after attending meetings for the Tomachichi Project, is I think the biggest point that needs to be taken away from everything is that y'all are voted in by the, the citizens of Spalding County to represent our interests, and you continue to fail us. We have made our point over and over again, whether it be in support or opposition of multiple projects, and you continue to fail in support of the citizens of Spalding County. And I think, if anything, that was the biggest takeaway by the biggest part for the people that were here earlier that left.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all that have signed up this evening. Would you care to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
All right, I have a motion to close. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. We're out of, uh, public hearing. All right, we're back to, uh, Ms. G, uh, Ms. Morales.
Good evening, Commission. So they are requesting a special exemption, um, to allow for family closure dwellings within R-two with a traditional design subdivision. The property is known as Teeman Point, and it consists of three forty-three detached residential dwellings. The special exemption seeks approval for the subdivision to develop with clustered dwellings pursuant, pursuant of UDO section eight-oh-three B-three as a traditional design subdivision. The house sizes will range between two-thousand and thirty and two-thousand eight-hundred and fifty square feet heated space. The developer will also donate land for a new fire station on the northeast corner of the subject property. A prior history to this, the subject was initially proposed as a subdivision consisting of fifty-seven single-family lots in two thousand and five. The subject property was zoned R-two. The developer, Buffington Village LLC, obtained approval of a special exemption subdivision to construct the subdivision pursuant to estate life neighborhood design set for UDO section four thirteen G double prime two C. A preliminary plat for Teeman Point was approved by Planning Commission on June fifteenth, two thousand and five. Public water was available for the subject property, but public sewer was not. Houses in the subdivision were to be served by septic tanks. The subdivision was never developed, though the preliminary plat approval was extended several times. Minerva Springs Lake LLC acquired the property from Buffington Village LLC in two thousand and six. No development, no development has ever occurred on the property despite the special exemption and preliminary plat approval at the time. Uh, with that being said, um, there are several conditions that the applicant would have to, um, agree to, which also include development standards for the property. This property did also come before the Planning Commission Board, sorry, the Board of Appeals Board, for two variances. One of them was to reduce the diameter of the cul-de-sac, which we would have to follow what the fire, the International Fire Code states, and also the setbacks, front setbacks, side setbacks, and rear setbacks. Um, and if you guys have any other questions, I'm.
What does the fire code state about cul-de-sac?
The fire code states that, um, it would, can't be no lower than ninety-six, if I'm not mistaken. Give me one minute.
The diameter of the cul-de-sac?
And the applicant's going to speak when you're done?
Mm-hmm. Yes, ninety-six.
You ready?
Right? The Board of Appeals reduced the cul-de-sac. I'm sorry. On the variance application, Board of Appeals recommended conditional approval of the variance, but required the pavement width of each cul-de-sac to be constructed with a minimum of ninety-six feet diameter as required by the twenty-eighteen International Fire Code.
Okay.
Can, can I make one point to supplement what Ms. Morales said? You do need to be aware that when sewer was, sewer is available, and this will be served with sewer, that is what kicks this in the. with sewer, that is what kicks this in the comp plan to allow for greater density of a residential development of one to four units per acre.
Mr. Davidson, please.
Sure. Sorry, this is a little reverse order. I'm used to going through the spiel first and answering questions later. Uh, there's, there's a lot to unpack here, and I know everybody's tired. I'll try to run through it as quick as I can, so, so please bear with me.
Do what's right.
I'm Brian Davidson of Minerva.
Take the time to do what's right.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I think we, I'm still further on in the agenda, so I'll be with you till the end. My name's Brian Davidson of Minerva USA. Address is 2292 Henderson Mill Road, Atlanta. Everything we have done for many, many years in Spalding, we've always tried to, to, uh, do things that are better, to improve what's already existing in the county, to try to make positive changes at all times. We've been fairly successful most of the time, uh, and we're gonna continue to hopefully do positive things in the county. This is land we bought in 2006, uh, but we didn't have it sewered until late in 2021. Uh, we built a gravity line to the property, and then from there, there's a force main that runs north of the Taualiga Reservoir. Our plan is in total sync with the, um, recent comp plan, um, that the county went through a long process for the 2042 plan, uh, which designated the whole corridor along Timon Road and up 155 as medium to high-density, uh, single-family housing. Uh, the whole area is basically zoned R2 already. The challenge to that is to do that kind of density, you need sewer. And, uh, for, for those of you that don't know, we're also the, um, owners of the community services sewer plant that serves Sun City. Uh, so we're very familiar with where you can and cannot sewer. And this is the last property to the east on Timon Road, uh, that gravity flows. The entire line, the rest of the way, is a force main that you can't tie into. So the next sewored property is north of the Taualiga reservoir, or river. So everything that's shown is one to four units per acre along there. I, I don't know how or when you'll ever get to that density unless the county at some point well into the future builds a sewer facility over there, and I'm sure there's, that might be on the 50-year plan if, if at all. So this really is the last sewored piece that's, that's, uh, on the east side of, uh, of Sun City. The, the current zoning allows homes that are 1,750 square feet. Our proposal is bigger at 2,000 square feet. Current zoning has no rental cap. We didn't want to do rentals. The staff asked us if we'd be okay with a 10% rental cap, which is totally fine with me, so we agreed to that, and I think they've added it as a condition. The current zoning has virtually no architectural details or controls on it. The new zoning category does. And the, the existing zoning structure didn't have a minimum square, or open space requirement. The new one does require 25%. So we're basically, uh, it's more lots, but in all other factors, we're increasing the overall, uh, details and quality of what we propose to do there. The fire station is some, is a promise that I made to the prior county manager about 18 years ago, that when we ever developed this property, we would donate a site, uh, for the fire station, and I will continue to honor that promise. With, with whatever development we do, whether it's this one here or if we revert back to the, to the prior one with the small houses and, and just do a little rental deal, I mean, either way, we'll donate the, the fire station, um, site. The current plan that I'll show you, uh, that's submitted, shows 343 lots. The staff has asked us to, to cap the density at three units per acre, uh, which is 295 lots, which we're again, fine with. Uh, you don't see that in the plan, but that frees up about 6.6 more acres of land. Um, I've recently just been asked to add more open space to the core of the community. So we would, I would suggest that if you are in favor ultimately of our application, that you add one more condition that obligates us to add another 6.6 acres of open space in the center of the community. Happy to redesign it. We still have to come back, uh, should you approve this, uh, special exception, we still have to come back for the preliminary plat approval. Issues that we're faced here, I'll, I'll kinda hit a few of them. Traffic, some of them, the internal roads, uh, are, are a non-issue. Um, the, the, the fire department has recently increased its standards, so almost all of Heron Bay and most of Sun City is done with 24-foot roads and 80-foot diameter asphalt cul-de-sacs. Uh, they're following a new, uh, standard which increases the road to 26 and to a 96-foot, uh, asphalt cul-de-sac. I'm obviously fine with that, that's their request. But there'll actually be wider roads and bigger cul-de-sacs than virtually all of Heron Bay and most of Sun City. I think it's just been recently enforced on, on Sun City for the last couple pods. So, in, internal safety vehicles are not a problem. We've actually even created an internal connection from the new fire station into the neighborhoods that don't even have to enter the street. Um, there's, there's a gentleman here, I forget his name, Mr. Hubbard, I guess, who has a rental home that he has on Timon Road, um, that is on that curve. It is a dangerous curve, I agree. There's just, there's a section of the Timon Road curve, there's about six homes that were built. They predated Sun City, and they're on the interior side of the curve, and none of them have adequate sight line where the driveways come out. They probably shouldn't have been approved way back when, uh, but they are, so every time one of those enters the road, yeah, it's not a safe condition. Uh, our property is, touches the edge of that curve. We purposely put the entrance to the far east of the property so that we had long and safe sight distance to eliminate that as an issue as well. Let's see. Uh, other, other issues, I keep hearing about compatibility with Sun City, which is, um, I, I find interesting. We, we know, we have all the statistics on Sun City. We obviously developed, like, we developed the first 700 lots. They still report to us on a monthly basis on their sales, and we have every final plat in the neighborhood, um, so my information's pretty accurate. Uh, our minimum proposed square footage is bigger than about 74% of the houses in Sun City. So, our smallest houses, there's only 26% of the houses in Sun City that are bigger than our smallest house. So compatible, we're actually bigger, not, not necessarily compatible. Lot size, they have over 1,300 lots with a, with a smaller, um, square footage of lot size as well, out of the current 1,720 occupied homes. Their one largest size, the largest prototype is 10 feet wider. Uh, architectural style and materials are all the same. Uh, they're, it's an owner-occupied community, not rental. Um, I've heard, there's all kinds of stuff flying around in emails and everything through Sun City that state that we were trying to sneak through a rental community. Never, ever once have I ever proposed it as rental. It, it's just a non-issue, so that's just outright false. And then from a price point, point of view, last 42 resales in the last six months at Sun City range from 252 to 485. I don't think we're gonna be able to get a house into the 300s. I'd love if we could catch the, the top end of the 300s, 389, 399, but I doubt it. Uh, between land costs, development costs, construction, everything else, and the level of standard that we're being held to by the city with architecture, or the county with architectural detailing and sodding and sidewalks and street trees and da-da-da-da-da. The bulk of this project will be in the 400s, and then there'll probably be a fair number of the homes on the better lots that will stray well up into the fives, would be my guess. For those that want affordable housing, yes, I totally agree that Spalding County needs better quality affordable housing. It just, it won't be here. I mean, 400 is, is reasonable, but you could still use with more affordable housing elsewhere. It just wouldn't be on this site, I don't think. I don't think it's appropriate for it. Um, I, I would like to do it elsewhere in the county, should I, should it be an open topic. And then, and then traffic studies are, are the other interesting one. About six months, eight months ago, um, uh, the builder in Sun City diverted their traffic. Uh, they, once they opened up that Timon Road entrance, they diverted all their construction traffic now out of the Timon Road entrance, so they can keep the Jordan Hill Waterfall entrance as their prime marketing entrance with no construction vehicles. The downside is that for the temporary period while that north part of Sun City is being built, that'll be all the construction traffic will come out of there. It is gonna be temporary, though, which is good. There's, I don't know exactly, off the top of my head, there's 300 lots maybe, uh, to go in that northern section. When they get through those lots, all that construction will then shift because they'll have to move to the southwestern part of Sun City, which goes way down off Timon, or off Jordan Hill Road, down, um, down south of the bend, way south of Baptist Camp Road. Um, there's a, an entrance there now, uh, that would have to be opened up and the parkway would come out there. So somewhere roughly about two years from now, all that construction traffic is just gonna come to an end, uh, depending how fit, quickly they build out there. And it'll shift to Jordan Hill, again, temporarily, but they have another thousand lots to go, I think, down there. So the Timon Road traffic has undoubtedly seen sort of an artificial spike from this construction traffic. And there's nothing I don't think any of us can do about it. There's been issues about the county not planning and managing, but there's really not a whole lot you can do, um, when, when the builder redirects all the traffic flow at, at one entrance and not another one. So, yeah, I, I think that, that sort of essentially, um, covers everything. I, I mean, I hope that we'll continue to do a lot of, uh, things in Spalding. We have a, a variety of things planned. We'd love to be doing some of this industrial. We're also a fairly major player in the industrial side. We're just a little late to the game, but, um, uh, one other thing that's just hanging out there that's maybe not relevant to this, but it maybe is to traffic, is that finally, after many, many years, um, we have now engaged a retail developer to do the retail center and hopefully a good chunk of medical at the entrance to Sun City, uh, on the village site right at Baptist Camp and Jordan Hill Road. A high-quality operator, uh, already is working with a number of tenants, restaurants, everything else. There's a number of things there. One, it's obviously the tax benefit for Spalding, but also it's gonna, it's gonna create a huge amount of spending in the county right now that's shooting north into Henry. Um, the, the medical, I think, goes about one-third to the south, one-third to the west, and one-third up north into, so a lot of that's being lost. When the new medical facilities are located at the front, it's gonna bring a huge, uh, increased percentage of Sun City's business back into Spalding. And as it comes to traffic, it'll dramatically eliminate a, a, a lot of that outflow traffic from people in Sun City. They won't be driving out all through the, the community anymore. They'll go to the retail across the road. And, and in fact, prob, hopefully, a lot of them will drive, uh, golf carts there as well, since we already built the, the tra, we, you know, back when we developed Sun City, we built the trails right past the waterfall, right to the entrance there. So, uh, the developer's kind of intrigued by the fact that you can get more cars in because they're all smaller, so, uh, it's interesting. So, all, all of that stuff is, um, you know, I, I think hopefully speaks well for, for what we're proposing to do here. I think it'll be a good fit. Um, I don't think it's gonna encourage additional sprawl down Timon Road. In fact, I know it won't. And when it come, if you ask me, why do I know that the sewer won't go down there? Um, again, digressing a little bit, but it affects this issue, um, we've been approached by the Spalding Water and Sewer Authority to try to define and outline the boundaries of where we serve. The, the, the plant can still handle a bit of additional growth and capacity. They wanted to make sure that we weren't trying to become some sort of a sewer monopoly, that our, our plant was logical, well-thought-out and constrained, that we weren't trying to scatter our, our, our sewer capacity all over. So we actually, um, worked with them, with Joseph Johnson and, and others at the authority to define a map, to define the area. And then the only, the real logical area for the future growth, if I sat and showed you sewer map, is actually all the land to the west of Sun City. Uh, basically, everything west of Sun City flows down to, uh, creek basins. The gravity flow right into the pipes. They've all been upsized and can handle the capacity. So, all the remaining capacity from, uh, you know, other than north of the Taualiga up there, um, uh, all the remaining capacity around Sun City will happen west of, uh, Jordan Hill Road. So, that sort of gives you an idea of that direction as well. So I think the concerns about Timon getting overbuilt are, you know, it may happen, but I think I'll be on the wrong side of the grass before that, before that ever happens, so.
Okay.
All right. And I'm happy to answer any other questions anybody has about anything that we're doing.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes.
Surprise.
I have a lot of slides and things, if anybody wants them.
Yeah, I've got, I'd like to see some pictures.
Uh, can you, can you put us on our little slideshow?
While, while they're putting that up, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, and if, they, there's one clarification, Brian. R2 for a patio dwelling requires 2,000 square feet minimum heated space, not 1,750.
Thank you, sorry.
Um, so, Eva.
Yes, ma'am.
My, my question is, in terms, you, you said something about your, there was a requirement for 5% rental or something like that?
It's a 10%.
10%. I don't even know why we're doing that. I mean, you're, you're, somebody's got a $300,000, $400,000 house, they're probably not going to wanna come and live in that and pay rent. And, um, my other concern is that there's a development in my unit, somebody talked about it, over at Lexington Place. There's a sign-up for a whole year, houses between the 180s and the 250s. I don't know if it's 50 units or whatever. There are probably, I think, when I looked on Q Public, there are three individuals who own their individual homes, and the rest of them are owned by people who live somewhere else, and they are rental property. We have no control. My point to you is that we have no control over what someone does with their property once they buy it. So for us, in order, for, for us to even put into our, into what our conditions are, telling them that they can't have a certain percentage of leasing, that's futile. Because if I buy a house and decide I wanna rent it out, Brian ain't got nothing to do with that, 'cause I bought the house already.
If, if I may, I can address it, because we deal with it in municipalities all, we work in 10 or 15 different municipalities around Atlanta, and there, there's a growing phenomenon across country called build-to-rent housing, where they're taking entire neighborhoods like this, and one company will build 200, you know, this, you know, 100, 200, 300, exactly, not exactly the same homes. They might have three-floor plans, repeat them over and over. All the interior finishes are exactly the same. They skin them out as basically as they can, and then they become a huge rental project. So basically, what you get is an apartment complex, but just in a different form. And, um, it can be good, it can be bad. Everybody has a different opinion on it. There is a huge need for rental housing, there's no doubt. But what municipalities are trying to do, if they're, don't want the rental housing, is to put some kind of a cap on it. 10 is low, usually we hear 25%, but 10 is fine. You have to keep some spaces open, because, like you say, if somebody buys a house, they might move and wanna rent it, or they wanna, you know, have, buy it and have for their kid, or there's any number of reasons. Uh, but the way it's managed is the, uh, when the zoning's passed, we are, we as a developer are obligated to create a mandatory homeowner association, and that homeowner association has a mandatory rental cap, in this case, 10%. So it keeps track of them, so you actually have to apply for a rental permit. So if you live in there, the first, in this case, 295 homes, the first 29 people that ask for one will just be granted. The next person comes in and they're over the limit, they won't be, but they go on the waiting list. And so basically, if you have a rental permit, it stays valid as long as you rent it, but if it sells to an owner, it goes back in the pool and somebody else can rent their home. So the, the only way that we could break that in the future would be if we had a situation where we came and said, hey, look, there's 50 out of these homes that wanna rent them, we would have to come back before the board and say, we would like to request a change in our rental cap. And you would make a, a decision on that basis. At, at that point, we could then change the homeowner documents and, and change it. So, all that being said, I'm a, I'm a huge believer in rental housing, and I think there's a need, the county has a massive need for higher-quality rental housing. There's, the rental stock is horrendous, unfortunately. It's old and worn out and beat up in most cases. This doesn't happen to be the right location, but there's a number of places in the county, and we have, we'll talk to you in different, on a different application about a couple of new concepts we have that we can bring very high-end rental, uh, housing to the county, and you can opine on it as a totally separate concept.
Can I follow up on that, Commissioner? Our only restriction is that they present covenants that they will enforce that has a rental cap. So, once they have presented the covenants and they comply with that requirement, we're out, we're out of the business. So, at that point, either Minerva or their purchaser would be bound by the covenants, and then it will be up to the people in that subdivision to enforce them. It's a matter of contract.
So my, my second concern is, um, and I had already shared this earlier, that I felt like there, there was all of the green spaces, um, at, around the edge of the property, and, not useful based on the fact that there's a cemetery in the one area and then there's a stream bed on the other side. and, um, not useful based on the fact that there's a cemetery in the one area, and then there's a stream bed on the other side, which, I mean, make, they make sense, but it doesn't leave very much green space throughout the development. How, how significantly will it affect your ability to get the number that you are trying to get close to without these, um, variances? Are we, have these variances been approved?
Yes, ma'am.
So, just for, off the record, this is what pisses me off about someone else, some other organization, being able to approve a variance before we even get to see it. Because I, I, I really do have a problem with, you're allowing the setbacks, the side setbacks for 295 houses. You know, you're, you're allowing the roundabout. I mean, I've seen some really small roundabouts. But, uh, roundabouts or cul-de-sacs, but what I'm saying is, is that what, what a variance did in this case is allows them to put more prop- more houses. I don't know that we can fix that, but it pisses me off every time it happens. I'm just being frank about it.
If, if, as a third party, if I may make a recommendation, it's the Board of Appeals before the Board of Commissioners. This is the only county that I think I work in where that happens. It's usually the Board of Commissioners first make the decision, or, or city council, if it's a city, they make the decision on the general concept. We accept, we agree with the concept of whatever it is, and then the Board of Appeals works on the details. It's just the way your ordinance is written, but you can probably change that fairly easily, I would imagine, with some sort of an amendment. And two months from now, it'll be reversed.
I, I, I don't know. I think it's not like when you say something 14 times, you remember it. Just keep saying it and nothing ever happens. Um, that's all I got.
You're, you're.
I mean, if we don't have any say-so about the variances, I'm, do whatever they say.
I can see Mr. Dr. Ledbetter writing right now already.
You're gonna be getting significant amendments to our zoning procedures to comply with a statute that was passed in the last legislative session.
So, the other thing that I know I have screamed about for the last three years is why are we having a, all of these developments that came in here tonight, nobody has sidewalk requirements? What, what, what's up? They don't, they're, we're talking about on a main road, you're covering acres and acres. You got 200 and some families coming out, but they got to walk out on the side of the road if they don't have a car to go somewhere. Where did the ball fall down? Isn't that supposed to be a rule somewhere?
I, I would, I would love to.
Not fussing at you, but I'm just, I'm fussing at everybody up here.
It is different zoning categories. In this case, we, your zoning category has us do sidewalks, but what it doesn't have is anything between the sidewalk and the curb. So, for those of you that's been through our neighborhoods, we like to plant street trees, which just totally make the place mature and look so much better over the years. Um, so that, that's a condition that I, I, I'm not sure they asked for it. We do it anyway, so we just said include it. So one of the conditions that you'll have is that we plant street trees on a 50-foot interval. And we've actually in the past had to work out all the, because your original ordinance didn't deal with the, the relationship of trees and sidewalk, all the underground utilities that are there. We had to work with the utility companies to relocate the utilities, so you could actually put a sidewalk in. Uh, but yeah, there, there, that's one thing you're asking. That's a massive impact on value. If you don't do sidewalks, it, you're gonna, I mean, it's a big drop in price.
Are you talking about the alongside of Teamen?
Right.
Okay, you're talking about internal sidewalks and put Commissioner Flowers.
I'm talking about sidewalks for individuals to be able to get into your complex.
Oh, and Teamen.
I mean.
This is, this is a different issue.
No, yeah, that's why I said I wasn't fussing at you, um.
This is something that, uh, we believe that, uh, Eva, you all should automatically be doing now. Every time we, somebody comes in, there should be external sidewalks.
For the length of their property.
The length of their property.
But on the roadway.
And we'll slowly but surely get that all taken care of, and if there's someplace in between, then the county will come and decide if we want to put sidewalks there.
I tell you what, I agree with the concept. We've already left the space in our plan. I'd be totally fine if you add that as a condition to our plan, because it looks great. And right now, they don't go anywhere.
Right, well, I mean, we can't connect them and we're not making anybody put them in.
Yeah.
I mean, our goal was to make it po- make it walkable for whatever neighborhood, especially if they're building it. And if we have to fill in afterwards, then we can do that, but, I mean.
Okay, that's a, that's a mistake on our part for not doing it. If you would do that, we would absolutely love it.
Yeah.
That's a segue into what I was gonna, gonna say as, as far as the, the black wave, wave up the sidewalks, because I think the plan looks great. I love the potential of the fire, uh, at least the fire station that you're donating, um, and all, or the, the site, and also the retail. I think that's gonna be good for Sun City. Um, I, I am, but, I am concerned about the traffic, though, with all that. I mean, I, you're hearing that, it, it, it is a concern. Do I think it's great what the plan itself is? Yes, but it's, it's gonna be busy there, and that traffic concerns me.
Yeah, that, that corner was an issue before we even zoned Sun City. I, I remember back then, the county, I don't know who, who was here even, but the county was, um, considering trying to, to cut, cut off the corner through some of, I think that gentleman's house and a few other houses, and I don't know if he owned it at that point, but there was the concept of cutting it off and, and kind of straightening out, uh, Teamen at that point. Obviously, it's a, a big capital expenditure for, uh, you know, where there's obviously money needed all over the county, and it just never happened, so, yeah. But that, that sharpness of that corner is a, a, a deal. After you get past it on the straightaway, it's fine, but the corner itself is tight.
It's 45 for us.
Well, maybe it needs to be less. What the lady says, she drives 65 anyway, so yeah, and that's a 45, so maybe we need to make it 25.
Again, if.
Or maybe in this area, it needs to be 10. But, but I'm, I'm being, that's, that's the, that's what power we have. We can actually make it illegal for you to travel that fast. I mean, there's.
Sometimes.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at that.
Sorry to keep throwing stuff in here, but if, if I would, I would strike that.
Sorry, we're just kind of batty up here.
You know the little yellow dots?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking. He's, I'm, that's where, that's where I'm at right now, is, is the traffic.
If you do something very cheap like that, your roads crew could do it for a very small amount of money. Just re-stripe the road, probably a double line to make it really obvious. Um, and then use those little yellow, you know, the little yellow round things? When you drive over them, it hammers the bottom of your car. Just put them right down the center of the curve all the way, and then you won't have people. The biggest problem is, is people get faster because they cut the inside of the curve. You go out there, the line is all kind of worn because people are cutting across, and it, it'll slow them down dramatically. I mean, you, you can also put a speed limit sign. That doesn't help much. But the physical concept of somebody just banging the bottom of their car, they'll do it once and they'll never do it again.
So how much control would we have over this?
A lot.
Do we have a lot of control for that?
I mean, that's our road. That's our road.
We can do it.
Only, only if we would agree to that.
We need to.
Yeah, because I mean.
Could they be flying on that street to Rio?
You can put speed tables on the roads for El Mig, but you can't put in between the.
We can put them on the.
The short term is, they're turtles. You put the turtles on the, the right side of the road.
Not across the road.
Your, these houses are double garages?
Yes.
And so what we've got is, uh, double garages and driveways.
Yeah, the, the minimum driveway length, it'll actually be longer, but the minimum is 20 feet from the edge of the sidewalk, so that you can park a car without blocking the sidewalk. So you actually have four-car parking per house.
Okay, okay.
So, so the setback is on the front of the house, not, not the driveway? Because on some place, I saw that the driveway was going to be shorter, or maybe that was.
Tell, tell me about the HOA. What are the HOA requirements gonna be? You said that this was gonna be comparable to, um, Sun City P Street. So does it have the 55 and older requirement?
Uh, no, no, it's not age restricted.
So it's not comparable at all to Sun City?
Not, not in that, I mean, Sun City basically covers the seniors' housing need, and obviously, it's got a massive amenity because it's 3,400 homes. Um, yeah, the set, the amenity complex would be a pool, um, playground for the kids, park, trail system throughout it. Um, and then the HOA would do, cover that mandatory maintenance of all the trails and the, the, uh, pool and facility entrance, that sort of thing. Um, so it'll be mandatory for the residents.
But what we've heard earlier tonight, comparing the, like, the car numbers and the traffic numbers to Sun City P Street, that, that's not gonna hold up, because it's, it is gonna be two cars per place. You have double garages in each of these.
It, it'll, it'll be more, yeah, fa- families will, will generate more vehicle traffic than, than, uh, uh, Sun City residents. It'll be di- different hours, but, yeah.
The traffic study that you guys had done, you did do a traffic study, right?
Uh, we haven't done one there since 2004, no.
Okay, so, so then the answer to my question is definitely no, that it didn't take into account the, the development that was forced on us by the Superior Court on the Smoke Road, or any other developments that have already been approved in that area, right? Because, I mean, you hadn't done it since 2004, so.
Correct. Yeah, I, I'm, I have sort of inside knowledge on the Smoke Road one as well, obviously, since, uh, well, probably shouldn't.
Yeah, I used to, I used to camp there, so that's, that's what I know about Smoke Road is.
Yeah.
I, I did my friend's Eagles Got Project on Smoke Road, that, that property, so.
That, that becomes a sewer capacity issue for them, um, which is a separate topic.
Well, I.
There is no sewer over there.
Sure, but with an 18-year-old traffic study, I don't, I don't know if I can in good conscience vote for 343 new homes. Um, at the same time, uh, I have a real issue with the minimum per lot size of 6,000 square feet. That is .1377 acres a house. That's bonkers, like, I, like.
52-foot wide lots, yeah.
That's, that is not Spalding County.
Well, we've actually built four neighborhoods already in Spalding County.
In a 55-plus HOA designed to have seniors that live there.
Uh, two are, two aren't.
Uh, which, which two aren't?
Uh, the cottages and the, yeah, I know, it's called Pod G G. I don't remember the name of it.
Pod G G?
Yeah, in Heron Bay.
Heron Bay.
What's the rental percentages in Heron Bay?
Uh, I haven't looked for a while. We don't run the HOA there anymore. It's been turned over to the residents, but.
Would it, would it surprise you that it's around 70?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think it's, it's around, uh, the last time we checked, which is about two, two years, is about, was about 28% at the time. Most of those, most of those came from, uh, it was higher for a while because they had a huge amount of foreclosures in the 2008, 2009 meltdown. A lot of people lost their houses, individuals, institutions bought them, and then, so it spiked up at that point. And then over the years, those bit by bit get sold back to end users, so it's been dropping a little bit. The residents themselves have, uh, have been trying to, to put a cap on, on it. Uh, they can do it, but they need to have a 67% vote, I think, of their residents to be able to change that in their own covenants.
I, I, I really hate to be, to, to make this sound like I'm cross-examining you, but it's, it's in 30, so we're cutting to the chase. So, so is your contention that the amount of rental homes in Heron Bay has gone down in the last two years?
Uh, I would guess that. I don't know it for a fact, but yeah.
Okay.
Well, I don't know about the last.
You, you might be the only person in the room that would guess that.
But I do know from 2012 till now, it was definitely going down. Because a lot of the rental ones that were bought by investors were then being resold, and the highest buyer was, was for sale. For a while, the rental guys paid more for a house, so they were the only buyers. Um, and then when rates got really low, when they got to the sub 3%, people could afford them. Prices had spiked a bit. The rental guys sold a lot of those homes that were rentals to make their profit, and it ended up with families moving into them and, and doing a lot of renovations on them. I mean, I, I can think of.
So, so again, you, you brought it up, so when, when the, and when the interest rates went down, it's your contention that less investment was made in rental homes? That BlackRock didn't build 7 trillion more, buy out 7 trillion more, uh, in, in raising?
Nationwide, there was a massive investment in rental homes.
Right, in, including here in Spalding County, where entire neighborhoods were bought out and turned into rental neighborhoods.
Yeah, the, the big push, it, it, it's kind of shifted. We, we were, we were originally.
It has, it has, it has shifted towards rental.
Yeah, 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 but it, it's changed the type, right? From 2000 and, I don't know, around 11 or 12, 2011 or 12, there were so many foreclosures that they were starting to be bought up by all kinds of small groups that emerged and merged and merged. Invitation homes started small, and I, I don't have no idea how many there are now. So for about a four or five-year period, they, all they did was buy, you know, foreclosures or cheap resale homes. As interest rates dropped, buyers came back in the market, the economy strengthened, the prices started rising, um, and they couldn't buy them, uh, and compete with for-sale buyers. So what, where it shifted to in the volume was they started going out and doing entire neighborhoods, where they would take a neighborhood, and most of the neighborhoods that were zoned probably pre-2019 or '20, had no rental restrictions on them. And so all those old zone neighborhoods, um, they, they bought them up as quick as they could and did pure rental community. So they basically turned 30-lot neighborhoods, 200-lot neighborhoods, whatever, into apartment projects for the most part. And that's still going on strong. Now, it's starting to wane a little bit for two reasons. One is it's harder and harder to find lots that don't have rental restrictions for those guys. Um, the other problem they have is interest rates rose so much that for them, it increased their, you know, costs went up, but then also their exit cap rate, if, for those of you that know real estate cap rates. Uh, they were building them on about a 5 and 1/2% cap rate and selling them on a 4 and 1/2%. Uh, we ourselves had 57 homes that we, we built as rentals and held them from 2013 to '21. We sold them at a 4 and 1/2 cap rate. Today, that same portfolio would sell about 7, 2 to 7.5. So you can't, to do, to make a profit doing a build-to-rent now, you have to build them for about an 8 and 1/2 to 9% cap rate, and you can't do that. Costs are, costs are too high. So it's basically hammered the market. Um, I, I had a conver- I won't name their companies, but I had a conversation with two of the big rental companies in town that are purely build-to-rent, and they're borderline shutting down at this point, because they can't do anything new. The math doesn't work for them. So it will shift. That's not to say it'll shift back in five or 10 years, and if you don't have a rental cap on everything new that you rezoned, that they might come back in and do it again. But right now, the economics aren't very much in favor of it, so.
I, when I worked at the hospital in 2009, in an emergency room with about 30 nurses, at least half of them were renting out of Heron Bay. And I don't know if that's just because of the downturn, but I'm saying that to say this. Rental property is not a bad thing. And, and, don't get me wrong, I mean, I, I talk like, okay, you don't want to turn into rental property, but everybody don't want to own a house.
Agreed.
And, and young professionals are just fine with paying rent, but they want nice places to live. But, but my concern in asking about, just about the rent is when we are asking you to put a cap on it, when we have absolutely no control over it, unless the property's sold. So, I mean, if, if you're okay with putting it on there.
I, I'm, I'm fine with it in this one, because I, I will come before you at some point in the next three, four months with a proposal for a, a purely rental community. I won't hide it. I'll tell you upfront what it is. It's gonna be a very different, uh, concept that you haven't seen, and I know you probably haven't seen it unless you've seen it in other cities. It's been done successfully in Phoenix, Dallas, um, Denver to some degree. Um, but it's basically small cottages, so instead of apartment complexes or two-story homes. The problem with all these ones they're building now, they're building a 25 or 2,800 square foot home, and a renter can't afford everything to maintain. They can't maintain the grass, they can't put blinds in it, they don't have enough furniture for it. So they need something smaller, but at a high quality, and that doesn't really exist. When you get smaller, you're into a crappy apartment or some unfinished townhome. So what we're looking at doing is creating these little patio homes, essentially like the smaller homes in Sun City. You know, 1,200, 1,300, 1,400 square feet, but an entire community of them with all the amenities, you know, swimming pool, sidewalks, all that kind of stuff. Um, they'll generate, in other parts of the country, they're generating much higher rents than, uh, on a per-square-foot basis than your typical home. Uh, and then more importantly, people stay a lot longer. So your typical rental deal, people turn over all the time, so from a landlord, you know, you have transient people, but you also, from a landlord, you're constantly painting the carpet, fixing, fixing, fixing. If you build it as enough of a community where it has some character and some life and people enjoy being there, they stay longer. So what's happening in these other markets is people are staying on average four, four and a half years, whereas a typical apartment deal turns over on average about every 14 months. So it just, it's a totally different product type. Uh, when it comes before, I'll, I'll explain it to you. I'll show you examples of it. Hopefully, it's something that, that conceptually works for you. I think the county needs it. Uh, it actually came up in a discussion with the, um, uh, the head of the hospital, um, sorry.
Tammy.
Ison.
Yeah, we, um, she was talking about medical at, in the front of Sun City, and she was asking what else we were doing. And I said, well, we've considered also in, in Spalding County to do this project. I was describing these homes. And, y- you know, you basically could have a two- or three-bedroom home, tons of windows, ground-level entrance, outdoor patio where you can barbecue, a little yard fenced in, you can have your dog run. Um, and she started describing the situation that they're having with, uh, their, their doctor, provided interns or residents.
Residences.
And the, the biggest problem they have is finding quality rental housing for them. I mean, they've got some of them, a bunch of them, living up in that project way up by Eagles Brook School in, uh, Henry County. Um, and she was, I mean, immediately it was like, wow, high-end lifestyle-type housing. And then the first question was, would you furnish them as well for these people? As well for these people. Um, so I, I, you know, I think there's probably. There, there's still a ton of people in the county that need cheap, 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 they've got low incomes and, you know, they need that. But I think there's also an awful lot of people that would be willing to move up, uh, in the quality of what they're doing, maybe pay a little bit more rent, that just don't have that opportunity right now. Um, and, you know, I, I, I think it's something that would, would be suitable, and I also think it's, it'll also draw a lot of single people, you were talking about the nurses, presumably most of them are female. And they're in Heron Bay because they're in a community, it's safe. It's secure, it's got security patrol, the neighbors have a watch program, they look out for each other. So they feel better being there than if just renting some. You know, other random place, so there's, there's a premium for that type of. Lifestyle character even in rentals.
What's the strategic, is that the reason why you didn't choose that, this, this site to be seniors, is that the reason why? Or, or because, because of Sun City?
Well, for senior, I just don't want to compete with Sun City, Sun City has eighteen hundred more lots to build through or something like that, I mean. That's, you know, kind of pointless, I mean, Sun City's great for that product, for those people. Uh, but there's a lot more people in the county that need.
I mean, and, and I'm just at the place that, right now, first of all, I'm mad because the stuff I want to fuss about, we can't, we can't even fuss about it. Secondly. If we're gonna let, if Sun City's gonna build fifteen or seventeen hundred more houses. I'm not really gonna be that concerned about another two hundred, or two hundred and ninety-five, or whatever you say it, it ain't gonna make that much difference, the traffic is gonna be there anyway, we need to fix the road. We need to fix the speed limit, we need to, to do. Whether anybody builds anything out there, that road apparently needs major stuff, doesn't it? So, I'm.
Okay.
I, I.
I'd like to kind of move along.
I'm ready.
I, I don't, I don't think our school zone can handle three hundred and forty-three new families. I don't think there's, that we have, we're eighteen years away from. Um, nineteen years away from the traffic study being done, that hasn't taken into account all the other explosive growth that that area has had. I, I don't think this is ready. I, I'm not saying that we should say no, I don't think this is ready to vote on, I think we should retable it, ask for a traffic, uh, uh, a new traffic study. I think we should ask for, um, the, the, the school systems input on what this would mean and how many new schools we would need, or how many new teachers we would need. Um, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think that we're ready for this. Point one three seven seven acres, six thousand square foot house. Um, I've just. Uh, I, I don't think this is ready, I mean, if we vote on it, it's a no for me.
Well, you know, and where I sit is, like I said, I love this, I love the plan, I really do. But we did our due diligence over and over again with Tom and Chi Chi, I don't think we have done it here.
Yeah.
So like Commissioner Dunn, I would at least like to see a, uh, traffic study, and that's all I would like to see. Um, just to know that, that we've done, that's what the folks here have asked for, I think it's fair for the people that are, that are there. Uh, we, we did it, the last application, I think we can ask for that here. But I do ask, do I think it's a good plan, yes I do, I would just like to have that. Personally.
Commissioner Wald.
I'd like to thank you for being here, you explained things very well, thank you.
My pleasure.
Um, but I'm on, at the side with James on it, I'd like to see traffic study. Um, I'd like to see how it affects our schools. Because we have just seen a, a humongous boom on the northeast side of our county. And just from a political standpoint, that, that whole side of the county decides everything. I'm, I'm down here in the southwest, I mean, that Brooks and Huckabee's all down there. And these people are the ones that are deciding everything for us out there, so I mean, I just, I'm just ready to slow the roll. Too much is happening too quick.
All right.
Oh, you want me to say something again?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to know, I just want to, to be clear, that, that if it is, if, if you're gonna table and you're gonna ask them to do a, a traffic study. Where was the traffic study that Sun City Peachtree did for the development on the backside? I, I mean, I, I'm sure there was one done on Jordan Hill Road, but.
Was that also the?
But, but how can we take into account what their traffic study says? When we're not taking into account all the other new development that's coming out of Sun City Peachtree on that side?
I, I totally agree, I think the traffic study doesn't need to be this in a, in a bubble, it needs to say. Where else are all the things that are already approved, let's take that in, not just what. These three hundred and forty-three housing worth of cars are gonna do, but like, what is this gonna do to Teeman Road? When there's two hundred and forty on Smoke Road, three hundred and forty here, the new development on Sun City Peachtree, the new developments here, the buildings that are already going up, like. We need a traffic study that looks at that.
Oh, I mean, I, I totally, I mean, I think the traffic study is, is wonderful, I just don't want us to, um. Have tunnel vision.
Sure.
And, and make a consideration, because everybody else is, that's got driveway cuts up, up Teeman Road. We, we didn't make them get a traffic study. So, so, but I mean, I'm sure they don't have.
As far as Sun City goes, and not requiring them to make a traffic study, uh, I, I think Peter's right. Like, it's a very different type of community, it's a fifty-five plus, you're not getting an average of two cars per house, you're, like, you're getting a lot less.
No, you are getting two cars per house. Do you got two cars? Everybody at my church that lives in Sun City got two or three cars. Everybody got two cars or something, look at me, beat the way I'm on the head. Everybody at Sun City got at least two cars. I'm just saying.
More golf carts, that's what we need, the, but the, the. The. The idea that. Two thousand square foot houses on six thousand square feet are gonna be selling for five hundred thousand dollars. Works if they're in a. Super high-end amenity community that's fifty-five and older for retired people that have already made their money and their kids are grown up. If you're gonna have. Young professionals and kids coming in, like. Uh, AKA families like mine. I, I mean, I'm a lawyer, and I can't afford to have me in a lawyer's house, like, that's, so the idea that we could sell, I, I. I barely afforded mine, mine was two hundred and eighteen.
Stop playing.
Uh, the, the idea that we could then sell. Three hundred and forty-three of them in Spalding County, with our schools ranked one hundred and fifty-third out of one hundred and fifty-nine counties. Um, is.
Which, which actually may dictate that you won't have as many families unfortunately, but. People do change, and, and new families will get engaged in the schools and work on schools, you get that general upswell as well. First of all, the, the staff has, has proposed a limit to two ninety-five versus three forty-three, so that's first one. But I, I think more importantly, I've been here since two thousand, I've been coming, I think it's the same room. Since two thousand, and when, the first time when I came in here, um, we proposed the south part of Heron Bay. Um, and everybody thought we were insane. Insane.
Still do.
And then, when we proposed Sun City, the average house price in Spalding County was eighty-seven thousand dollars. And we came in and said, we think we can build, these houses will be two fifty, two seventy, and everybody was going, there's no way, you're crazy, who's gonna want to live here? We, you, you, why, why would seniors want to live here, there's no seniors, there's nothing, no reason for them, et cetera. You've got, your county's well-located. You know, you're seeing it now with, you're gonna generate some revenue from industrial, which is great. Um, nineteen forty-one, um, can, can absolutely get, um, some improvement, Griffin downtown is cool and is starting to get sort of re, re-energized. Um, across, across the county, you, you've got the growth coming to you. Um, and because of COVID, there's a huge push again. Instead of people wanting to move closer into the city, they're wanting to move a little further out. Um, so we're seeing that in further out areas, for the first time in my entire duration of working in Spalding. There's people that are, are not coming here because it's the, the low price play, or all they can afford, and okay, we'll put up with a long drive. They're coming here because they want to come here, because it's a little more rural, it's a little more relaxed, people are easiergoing. Um, they don't mind making the investment in it, um, and I, I think you. You really should be confident in that and be prepared that that, uh, will and can happen. Um, I, I know Griffin is not part of, of your mandate, but Griffin itself will drive a lot too, and, and. It, it, it's already stepping up, and every time I drive in, there's cool new little shops, restaurants, it's coming, I mean. Mr. Galloway was pushing me twenty years ago to try to make an investment here, and it was hard to convince me in that, in those days, but, um.
And, and, and again, I'm, I'm not trying to beat up on you personally, but I graduated Griffin in two thousand, and I grew up. And, uh, around, uh, a development. Where a developer came in and said pretty much exactly what you just said. And that developer's the water phone on Ellis, it's gonna be awesome, it's gonna be great. And if the sheriff was still here, I'd ask him some of the crime stats of Waterford. And how it started as a real high end, and now, that you.
There's, development is always a lot of dreams, a lot of theory, I mean, I, I see a ton of them, I mean. Clayton just had the most amazing one I've ever seen, I think. But. So, you, you have to push forward, you have to push limits, you, you put, I mean. Sun City was supposed to sell three hundred homes a year, we were supposed to be out of it by then. You know, we made this massive capital investment in it, we, we spent a huge amount of money in the sewer facility land. Uh, Pulte deployed a huge amount of capital, and we got caught in the downturn, and it's been slow. But it does come, and it's only coming because we created it, we took the first jump, we made the effort. And, you know, after a while, the people get engaged, they, they, they talk to their friends, it becomes a place they want to be.
And if this was an extension of Sun City, I don't think we'd have as big of a problem, if this had the same kind of HOA, uh, HOA restrictions, fifty-five and up, et cetera. I, I don't think I would have as big of an issue, but, but it doesn't. And you guys keep comparing it to that, and you really can't compare to that.
A traffic study, how, how, we could do that, I, I also, my question is, how soon would we think, would we be able to get a traffic study, how does that work?
That, that encompasses all of the growth for that area.
Yes. How, how long are we talking here?
How long is that gonna take?
Is that something that we do or something that we're asking him to do?
Oh, we can do it, I mean, we, we, we've done studies for the county before, when we came to, to. Spalding, Spalding had no clue about its water system. We, we actually spent about sixty thousand dollars and studied your water system and, and mo- modeled it and figured out where the issues were. And helped make improvements to it, so you actually could serve Sun City.
All right, uh.
Say.
It, it.
All right, do I have a motion to table?
We can do the, we can do the traffic study, the things that I don't know are decisions that you'll make. I, I know some of the limitations probably, you don't even know, in sewer being probably the biggest one. I, I can see the land use plan was done, or the comp plan was done without contemplating some key developments.
We're just trying to get one thing, we're agreed, uh, traffic, traffic study.
I'd like that.
So, table what a traffic study.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
When, when do you think you could have that back for us, so that we can bring it back to the?
Um.
Are we talking three months, six months?
No.
No, it won't take that long.
It depends on their availability, they can do it in thirty days if they're available, I don't know, I'd probably use Markac and Porum, we use them for all traffic studies, so. Um, we'll, we'll just have to give them some inputs, the, the one big variable that, that you can't input is the, the. Um, construction traffic coming out of Sun City. I mean, he's just gonna have to guess at that, because he's, there's no way, I mean, you could go out there and measure it, and it just varies peak times and all that. But what, what I can tell is when it's gonna end.
All right, so, do I have a motion to table until they have a traffic study?
Yeah, motion to table.
And we table, just table it until maybe our June first meeting, that'll give him more than thirty days in May to find it, and.
Can I, can I ask you to try to table it just for, for one, and if I.
That'd be fine, if you can get it.
I don't know when your notice is, but if I, if I know that I can't get it done in time, I'll give plenty of.
As soon as you can get it done, we'll bring it back.
Put it on the next zoning, as soon as you get.
All right.
All right, okay, Gwen is making the motion.
Hey, guys, we can't have people yelling from the crowd, that's not how this works.
They're, they're suggesting an independent study, which is a fair request, the only thing is. It's, it's a traffic engineer, I don't dictate what he does, it's like me telling an engineer what to do or a lawyer, I mean, they, they.
We understand.
Yeah.
Your company's not doing the table study, you're just.
Much in the table.
He's not gonna let me make up the, change the numbers with my crayon.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, five zero.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
Thanks, Brian, we appreciate it.
And again, sorry, I don't, I don't mean to beat up on you.
It's fine.
I got PTSD.
How many more things have we got, how many more?
Slick developers.
All right, next, next item is public hearings.
We've already done all three of those. No, no, we did the.
We have one more for the cemetery.
We're done with you.
I'm on for the cemetery.
He's up for the cemetery.
All right, here we go. Persons desiring to.
Can we assume that's okay?
Well, we, we gotta, did anybody sign up?
All right, let's go. Persons desiring to speak must sign up for the appropriate application. When called, speakers must state their name and address and direct all comments to the board only. Speakers will be allotted three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertaining to, considered. By the Board of Commissioners on this agenda. No questions will be asked by any of the more commissioners during citizen comments, outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times. Item number one, conduct a public hearing on streetlight district for Sun City Pods twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. Del Webb Boulevard Extension and Peachtree Parkway.
Motion to go into public hearings.
Second.
All right, uh, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, five zero, thank you.
Anyone sign up?
Mr. Chairman, no one has signed up for a public hearing for the streetlight district.
Motion to close public hearing.
No, we gotta do, gotta do, bend into material, right?
You got a what?
Nobody signed up.
You, you need to.
To the streetlight.
Are you gonna approve the streetlight district?
Yes.
All right, uh, but motion to close the public hearing?
Second. I made the motion.
Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion to approve the pub, the, uh, streetlight districts for Sun City Pods twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, Del Webb Boulevard Extension and Parkway.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, five zero. These are zero-sum, uh, issues for all of us, uh, at, uh, Spalding County. Item number two, conduct a public hearing on the abandoned cemetery located at parcel. Two, three, three, six, Teeman Road pursuant to OCGA thirty-six seventy-two seven.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Anybody to, uh.
Mr. Chairman, no one has signed up.
Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
I will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
He's here for the cemetery.
Oh, wait, I forgot, Brian, it's you.
He can speak.
Oh, okay, okay.
Do you want to?
So we, we close, he's gonna speak in a minute.
All right, uh, do I have a motion?
Second, she, she made a motion, a second.
Gwen made the motion.
Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand, five zero, motion closed. Uh. Uh, Ms. Morales?
Yes. So, um, the applicant seeks approval to develop land on which an abandoned cemetery is located. In order to do so, um, they have to follow this statute for OCGA. Which requires them to do a architectural, um.
Archaeological.
Archaeological, sorry, archaeological study, um. And also have some type of cemetery boundary delineation. Per whatever, uh, information is brought back from that report. Uh, which they have done, they provided us the report that they did. That was turned in from two thousand and three, and I'm assuming nothing has changed since then. Um, and we are asking for a. Conditional approval with the six conditions that are noted, and I could go through one, through all of them, if you would like.
How many are there? Conditions?
Just six conditions.
Okay.
I, I think, I mean, if they're willing to take on the responsibility of that cemetery. I guess the only thing I saw in there that kind of concerned me was where it said that if someone else buys the property, they have to take over the responsibility. Isn't that kind of far-reaching for us to?
Like, it would work like an easement, right?
I'm sorry?
It would kind of work like an easement, right, like whoever owns it takes care of it.
And we'll ultimately dedicate it to the homeowners association.
I was just about to say, the answer would be it becomes HOA property.
And then they.
After Minerva sells, it's developed, and that turns over as part of the common area, and, and part of the HOA responsibility.
The, the HOA in. Um. Hillendale used to own, uh, Park, and they just, once all the kids got old enough, they stopped keeping it up and just let it die. Um. What, like, what if the HOA just doesn't take care of it, was the recourse? Not saying they will, I'm just, like, I'm looking at what Hillendale did with the park, you know.
They just, it's just theirs, it's their stuff.
What if I told you that the statute doesn't go that far?
I would, I would be amazed, I would be amazed.
I don't know the answer to that.
Didn't think it all the way through, get out of here.
But we will have done our, we will satisfy our obligation, we've, they've identified eleven graves, four that are marked. They proposed a plan to put a fence around it, maintain it, provide an easement to get in and out, that satisfies the requirements of the statute to allow them to develop.
Do I have motion to approve? And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have motion and a second, any more discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five zero. Five, zero.
Right.
Thank you. All right, item number three. Conduct a public hearing on the first reading of a proposed ordinance amendment to the Spalding County Development Impact Fees.
I motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
All right, uh, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Anybody to speak for...
No, sir, no one has signed up to speak.
Motion to come out of public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, we're out of public, uh, hearing. Dr. Ledbetter?
Um, so, back last year when we had Paige Hatley and Bill Ross participate with, um, Blue Cypress to conduct our comp plan upgrade, Bill and Paige provided us with the information we needed for our impact fee, our, uh, comprehensive impact element for the county. We have had an impact fee for a number of years. Currently, our impact fee is set for, um, goodness gracious, my mind just went blank, 1,700 and, please forgive me, it's right here someplace?
Did I take your paper?
You did, but that's okay, I've got another.
I'm thinking of that.
No.
It doesn't look like this.
No?
No.
Oh, no, we got, we all got it.
Nope, hang on, hang on, hang on. Ms. Eva, do you remember what our current impact fee is?
Goodness, uh, no, sir, not from the...
1,731, I believe it is.
That sounds about right.
This one says 1,736.27.
That's what it is, 1,736. And during the review that Paige Hatley and, thank you, and, I got it, thank you, and Bill Ross put together for us, their recommendation was a maximum for Spalding County would be $7,414.79. This impact fee would go toward fire, sheriff, jail, emergency management, and E911. That would be the maximum allowable under the law. The recommendation at the time that we had our first public hearing on our impact fee back last November, uh, during that discussion, the board had many comments about where we should fall with our impact fee. And Ms. Hatley's recommendation was that we should use Henry County as an analog for our impact fee. At the time, Henry County was going through their, uh, impact fee review as well. Since then, they have agreed, Henry County has agreed to increase their impact fee to $3,544.46. An additional conversation that the board had during the time that Ms. Hatley and Mr. Ross presented was that, uh, this, this board wanted staff to review adding roads and the animal shelter to our impact fee. Staff agreed to, uh, recontract with Bill Ross, I'm sorry? Yes, the Aquatic Center was one of the considerations. But staff, uh, worked with the board to understand availability for re-contracting with Bill Ross and Ms. Hatley. Their availability was late summer of this year for us to be able to add those. But we also discussed moving forward with the impact fees that were presented during, uh, that public hearing that Ms. Hatley put together for us with you, with us using an analog that Henry County put together. We, staff, have built a spreadsheet for the commissioners to review and Ms. Hatley, uh, put it together a little bit more succinctly. I believe you've got a copy of this in your packet on your, your dius this evening. But it showcases the 18 counties out of the 159 counties that currently impose an impact fee in the state of Georgia and where each of their impact fees are in total, uh, the total amount of monies for the single-family residents. And one of the conversations that I believe that the board had during our public hearing back in November was how do we compare with the other counties? And I would, uh, I would propose that we fare quite well with the other counties, with the highest being, um...
Pike?
Pike County at, uh, $6,775.99 and the lowest being Fayette County at $600.57. The recommendation that staff is making, the recommendation that Mr. Ross and Paige Hatley continue to make for your consideration is to use the Henry County as an analog for where we set our impact fees. I'd entertain any questions that you guys have as we walk this journey forward. This is our first reading, by the way.
Do we set this as like one multiplier and it goes to all the different things? Or do we set parks, rec, green space, public safety, and a library? You see what I'm saying?
So, the, yes, the, the way that the multiplier was put in place for the county was an equal distribution across all of those accounts. You can come back and, there are some guidelines for where you set those multipliers, but the, again, the recommendation from both Bill Ross and Paige Hatley were that we set them as an equal multiplier across, uh, the areas that you see.
Follow-up question, the different columns that you see, library, public safety, et cetera, like, the impact fee collected from that, does it go to the library and public safety and whatever, or does it just go into a pot that then we spend towards all things?
No, it actually goes into each element in, uh, administration, Ms. Jim Garrison and the, the ladies that work for her in, in finance, they actually have it distributed for each one of those buckets. And just as an aside, when we accept impact fees up in community development, if, uh, if the credit card goes through, it pushes the correct amount of dollars into each one of those bucket areas before it even gets up to...
That's pretty slick.
Administration.
Well done.
Motion to approve the increase based on the recommendation. Was it 47% increase?
Yes, ma'am, we, we can call it the dollar figure so that we can do the adjustments for all of the other impact fees. Because the dollar figure that's associated with the single-family also gets applied to every development that comes into our county. So, uh, the two warehouses that, or the, the two developments that y'all talked about this, earlier this evening about warehouses, they would have an impact fee based on square footage. So, it would not be a $3,500 for those warehouses, it would be a substantial amount of money that actually helps us pay for things like fire trucks.
Right.
All right, is your recommendation 35, 44, 46?
Uh, yes. Is that the Henry County one? 35, 44, 40, exactly.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Report of the county manager?
One more, please. One more? There you go. So, just as a heads up, I'm going to make mine very quick this evening. We've made an offer and the offer was accepted by our new community development director. I would invite our community to the May 1st regular meeting for introductions. And then, secondly, we've made an offer to our newly-appointed chief code enforcement officer and just a shout-out to Sheriff Dix for all the help in locating the right person for this role. So, thank you very much to the sheriff. We are moving forward in these two areas.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Bolden?
I'm going to be rather long-winded tonight, I'm sorry.
Oh, man!
No, I just got one thing. I got, uh, we talked about this at the beginning of the week. We got some of the storm damaged, uh, people right now that are trying to rebuild and we got the moratorium in place and, we got it.
Okay. I got it. Matter of fact, kudos to Ms. Eva. We have a total of 120 that will be impacted. You will receive this information between now and May the 1st so that we can vote on it and get, uh, these neighbors of ours taken care of before the moratorium comes off.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, so what is it that that paper is about, again?
The current houses that were impacted.
The storm.
Yeah, we had...
And they can't do anything because of the, we've got a moratorium.
We had houses...
Okay, so we're allowing them to permit aside from the moratorium?
Correct.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to understand. Nothing, I have nothing.
We didn't even ask me.
Okay.
All right?
I have nothing.
I, I have two things. One, today at Downtown Association, we talked about the 4th of July parade. It's coming up, it's coming quicker than we want. I'm excited about it, I love 4th of July. So, we need to get the county's involvement and whatever, whatever we can do to have that parade. They want to use the parking lot back here again, just like normal, I don't see why it would be a problem.
Correct, two things. One, uh, Juneteenth parade.
Yes.
The city is asking us to take the point on that. That will be the MLK and Juneteenth all together. And then, the second parade will be, um, the 4th of July.
Awesome.
So, we're going to have two separate parades?
Yeah, on Juneteenth, we're going to have a Juneteenth parade. There was a, there was a parade last week that I didn't hear about until my wife was like, why are the cars blocking downtown?
It was very silent.
I would, I would have totally come and, I mean, that's my alma mater. The other is, of course, um, I'm going to keep pounding you on building code updates. You see the emergencies that are coming.
Uh, we just had a conversation about that offline. Our contractor, Muni Code...
Yeah.
We finally got an answer from them after they have gone through two attorneys. The latest attorney had the, all the information on, um, uh, the update to our code starting in January and we are expecting, and we were told, that he would be completed with his review by end of May, the beginning of June. You, you are making the same argument that we are making with them. We are not happy at all, we've expressed our, our displeasure with them. It would be great to be able to find a local attorney who can help us.
Everybody look around at somebody else.
We got plenty up here.
If, if, if I had hired an attorney, if you treat me like that, I'd, I'd be a couple of our association.
You heard what I said, he's a attorney in the room.
And I don't see why we...
Could we go back to the last item about, those are tornado-damaged homes?
Yes.
And they are, were non-conforming, correct?
Correct.
And they've been destroyed?
Correct.
All right. They can be replaced as a matter of right?
Right.
Under 403A?
I don't, yeah, I don't see why they would need to come in and even...
They don't have to come in to get any approval.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Newton, we'll make sure that that gets taken care of tomorrow.
Wait a minute, what you saying now? Because I had to pay for a permit.
I didn't say you don't have to pay for a permit. You don't have to come in to get any approval.
Period.
Oh, okay, don't make me start talking bad up here about y'all.
My mom's bill got pushed down.
Now, if the lot remains open for a year...
Right, then you lose the...
Then they got to come back or comply with it, but, I mean, we're three months post-tornado. They don't have to do anything.
Yep, awesome. I was, it's 11 o'clock.
Me too, huh, I'm so proud of my daughter.
That's all I got, that's all I got.
Anything from the county, thank you, anything from the county attorney?
She's been with us about an hour, man, she talks all day, no she...
Anything from the county clerk? Citizen engagement?
Oh, Deandre, they wanted you to DJ something for the Downtown Association.
Yeah, I told, I told the Doug earlier.
Okay, everyone needs to make sure you come by, uh, Monday of next week and pick up your travel documents, okay?
I'll be an international moderator, look everyone.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero.